You should be able to hear us now.
Oh.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Uh, before we begin, could I ask your indulgence that we take a moment and just reflect on the day today being September 11th and the 22nd anniversary of that horrible day? And the events that transpired and the, uh, the people that were lost. We had a lovely ceremony today at the fire department earlier today that was very well attended. So if we could all just take a moment, thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. At this time, we'll entertain any public comments. Uh, public comments are for anyone that has it would like to address anything that's not on our agenda tonight. And I would first address the room. Is there anyone in the room with a public comment? Oh, hi.
Cindy Marshall, 45, Rosewood Lane. I don't think this is on the agenda. It's an old business. I'd like to commend the board for their decision to hire a development and research firm for the recruitment of our new town administrator. Widening the geographical recruitment area to at least the entire state, hopefully the northeast, for well-qualified individuals for this very important town position is an excellent idea. In doing so, your search will be and should be way beyond these four walls and away from anyone who does have or has had any association within these four walls, be it by appointment, employment, or election. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Anyone online? I don't see any hands. Okay, we shall proceed. Seeing as I started this late, it's now 6:05. And we are going to have a joint public meeting with the Southwick-Tollin-Grandville Regional School District. Rob, you gotta shorten that up. Really?
Out of my control, but okay.
So you know, a state need force. I was working at the school. We were gonna have a contest. Her name decided what it was. We couldn't believe it.
You can say the Southwick representatives of the school committee are here.
And we do have the Southwick representatives of the school committee here. Uh, Robert Stevenson, Ryan Korobkov, Erica Emmerman, and Desiree Maloney. And per the Southwick-Tollin-Grandville Regional School District agreement, when there is a vacancy on the school committee, that vacancy is to be filled by a joint appointment of the select board and the remaining Southwick members of the school committee. And just for those playing along at home, it is a quirk of or a little bit different from the way we normally do things. It's not until the next election. It's for the remainder of the term of the person who's leaving the board. So with that, we have.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be recusing myself because one of the members that's applying for this position is a family member of mine.
Very well, so. So then it'll be the remaining members of the select board and the remaining members of the school committee. Anyone else heading for the door at this moment? Okay, and um, just for all of us, cause is this your first go around with this? No. Where Eric?
I'm right here, Eric.
Eric moved because that candidate can fit there. Carl gave her that direction.
Okay.
She bolted out the window.
I thought she may.
I got as far away.
It's still gonna pick you up.
He's five feet away.
You got the best seat in the house next to Click. Okay, so we have seven questions, correct, for each candidate? And then I, I propose that we just kind of go in round robin fashion. And now we're down to how many? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven questions. So it'll all be off, off. If we can keep track of it. Fair enough?
Sounds good. You want to start?
No, no, you're the chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Sounds good. I'll start. And we'll just go around this one.
Which way?
Or clock. You want to do clockwise?
You're, you're the chairman.
Let's do clock.
Okay, so our. And then we'll give the applicant a chance at the end for anything that they'd like to add. And we'll go from there. So 6:05 PM is Joanne Davidson. Almost like we reversed that.
It won't happen again.
How are you?
Open the front door and it was pouring rain. I'm like, yep. Yes, just went off.
Of course it is, right? Of course it is.
All the rain that we missed over the summer, we've got the last three days. All right, so Joanne, we've got a number of questions for you.
I heard there was seven.
There are seven. So I'm gonna start with the first one. It says, why are you interested in becoming a member of the Southwick-Tollin-Grandville Regional School District Regional School Committee?
I anticipated this question coming up and a big part of our professional development in Chicothis year was finding your why. And the why for me is I have three children in this district. I want to be part of something that is going to have a direct benefit to them and their peers that I have seen grow up throughout the years.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Ryan, you're up.
What issues in education are of particular interest to you in the Southwick-Tollin-Grandville Regional School District? Particular interest because I have a daughter on the autism spectrum is definitely issues related to special education, keeping classes small, keeping students as much as possible in district. I was reading the article about the finance board that there's a lot of students going out of district and that was concerning to me because, okay, what aren't we providing that students have to go out of district for? Like, why can't we provide it here in Southwick?
Okay, um, what experience or skills do you bring that qualify, qualify you for this position?
I am an almost 30-year veteran, veteran at special education teacher. I'm co-president of the Sardam Early Foundation, which provides sensory awareness training to EMS professionals, well as fire and police departments. Over the years, I've conducted many, many IEP meetings, so I know how to work with a multitude of different people. I know how to kind of talk people down. They get a little heightened and they're advocating and they just, you can see them on their edge. It's like, okay, let's take a step back and just calming them down. It's like, okay, let's take a look at it from another perspective and see if we can come to a joint resolution.
Thank you.
Mr. Mogo.
How do you keep abreast of issues that are currently facing the Southwick-Tollin-Grandville Regional School District?
Um, I am constantly reading anything that comes home from the school. I'm always on the Southwick website. Things in the media. I try to go, um, keep in touch with like the sports teams. My son's on a couple of teams. My daughter's on a couple of teams. So just trying to be visible and knowing what's going on in the school. Trying to be as, at as many of the extracurricular activities as I'm able to.
What previous committee experience do you have and how will it benefit the school district?
Um, when I was teaching in Ludlow, I was part of the, um, Ludlow Education Board. I was a building representative. So I would take issues from my building to the executive board for the local education association. Then depending on what happened at that meeting, I would bring it back to my building. It's like, this is what was discussed. This is what we're agreeing on. Is this something acceptable to you? Do we need to go back and maybe refocus or rediscuss issues? And I was part of, when my, we were still in, living in Westfield, my children at St. Mary's, I was part of their PTO.
What is your understanding of the role that the school committee plays in the governance of this district?
They take all the information that they're given, whether it's finances, educational issues, teacher issues. They discuss it and come to the best, fairest outcome for everybody involved. What is going to benefit the Southwick-Tollin-Regional School District the most? I mean, coming to a good outcome for everyone. It's like, what is going to be the best benefit and what is going to do the most for the most good?
Okay, and last one. Says, what type of commitment will you make? I know it's a little fuzzy, but.
Um, I will be at all required meetings. I will accept appointments on committees that are requested of me. I will do outside research if that is what is requested. I will, I'm willing to learn the position and do what is requested or like, okay, this is what we want you to investigate. I'd be willing to go and do that as well.
Well, those are our seven questions.
That wasn't so bad. It's been a long time since I sat at an interview table.
Is there anything that you would like to add before we bring in the next candidate?
Um, I, when I was reading this article last week, um, it was just trying to find out like, why are so many of our students having to go out of district? It's like, what's missing from the Southwick system that we can't provide those services for some of those special education students?
I mean, I'm sure the superintendent could probably give you a very lengthy answer on that. From my understanding and from what the information that we're getting, I thought, I don't think it's necessarily what we're not able to offer. I think what we're finding over the years is that more and more of the children are having more and more complexities that it just because we are a smaller district, it makes it a little bit more difficult for us to be able to provide everything for everyone. Um, there's going, there are certain thresholds that once we reach that, we determine that, okay, look, they, they really, we can't.
They need more than what we're able to get. We want to, but we can't.
Now, that doesn't mean that this district isn't trying to create programs of the last year or two. We've actually created three programs that have allowed us to keep more kids in district. Um, as you mentioned, from a financial perspective, it costs us an exorbitant amount of money um, to send somebody out of district. So before that happens, I do know that they go through an exhaustive sort of checklist to make sure that that doesn't happen. And obviously from a Southwick perspective, we pick up 85% of that freight for any time that happens. So it's, it's something that we certainly do keep an eye on.
And also going along with the, um, out of district places for the specialized students, um, the out of district for like Smith-Bog and Westfield Tech.
That's a whole different. The biggest issue with that, just to keep it small, is that we won't be able to replace all of those because there are literally mileage protections for some of these programs so that the state has created that so that they don't have too many of them. Um, but I mean, for aviation, plumbing, um, anything like that, there are between Westfield Tech and, and Smith-Bog. It's, they just go and what we're seeing is that more and more kids are looking for something that's different than a university degree. Um, so we certainly don't want to stop them from doing that.
Oh, I completely understand. My daughter's a graduate of Westfield Tech and we were Southwick residents too, so. But when we moved here, it's like she had already done a year and a half in there. So it's like, okay, she really wanted to stay there, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
The technical education for some students, that is their niche and that's where they need to go.
Absolutely. Anything else to add before we?
No, that, it was just the out of district stuff that I was.
Yeah, that's not an easy solution.
No, no, it never is.
It's on our radar. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next candidate is Russell Fox.
You were the first one.
I noticed that. I was gonna thank you quietly, but publicly I done messed up.
We, we, in fact, we got. No, I'm like, well, Erica had it circled.
Yeah, no, it was an arrow.
Two demerits for Mogan over here from the school.
That she decided to pick whatever question she wants. She did. I was sitting there going like, what did she miss?
Yeah, Erica grabbed it.
It's hard in a crowd.
Focus.
I can't believe you remember that. That was in the line, what the hell's wrong? And then what question are we on?
Here, Mr. Fox, we have a hot seat for all the applicants.
I have extra sets of questions of somebody who's like another, somebody who's been writing a piece of paper.
We're good. All right. Well, thank you so much for sending in your application, Mr. Fox. We've got seven questions here for you. Okay. That we're gonna do a little bit of a round robin format. Everyone's gonna ask a question at the end of that. You'll have a opportunity to sort of make any sort of statement that you would like to, uh, which indicates why you were really looking for this position. Any questions on it?
No.
Okay, perfect. So Ryan, you, you get to start first.
Why are you interested in becoming a member of the Southwick-Tollin-Grandville Regional School District School Committee?
Well, education is really the bedrock of any community. And I believe that quality education is really key to make sure that our youth get that because that's the foundation they need to succeed in life. And, uh, I've always been involved. I'm involved with the rec center. And even though my youngest daughter graduated in 2018, I'm still there, uh, working with the youth.
Great, thank you. Russ, what issues in education are of particular interest to you in the Southwick-Tollin-Grandville Regional District?
Critical thinking. Civics, I think, or two right off the top. I think that I read a few weeks ago, we had a new superintendent in the region. Don't ask me her name. But she said something I think that was very important. Keep politics out of the schools. And I, I think we see what's happening in our country and I, I think that's key. Keeping politics out. Main goal is to educate our kids. Uh, they're the future. They're our future, whether they stay here in Southwick or go somewhere.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What experience slash skills do you bring that qualify you for this position?
Well, we'll start at the beginning. Uh, my father went to a one-room schoolhouse here in Southwick and then moved to consolidated school when they opened it. Uh, my brothers and I all went through the Southwick school system. My children went through the Southwick school system. My youngest, like, not to be repetitive, just graduated in 2018. But I think more importantly is I've been working very closely with the school, especially the last 12 years. But over my lifetime, I was involved with regionalizing the school system. I was involved with the $62 million project to renovate all three school buildings. I was involved with bringing sewers to the school system to come into compliance with the, uh, DEP order of conditions. I, and as a member of the select board, I implemented an annual review of the schools on behalf of the town of Southwick. And each year, buildings ground, building inspector, myself, uh, fire chief would meet with the superintendent or uh, your buildings and grounds and other officials, and we would tour each building from top to bottom. You know, to, to look at maintenance, look at the issues and address it. And I think it was great. It, it created a, a better dialogue between the town and the school rhythm. Other than that, I guess I just want to emphasize that I'm aware of a lot of the issues facing the schools right now. Uh, I understand chapter 70. It's, it's a disgrace, you know? It's benefiting 17 communities and the other three, what's left of the 351 are, are, you know, on the chopping block. It's unright, not right. Uh, we were promised 100% regional transportation when we regionalized. So that's an issue. Chapter 766. I remember back in the eighties when they said this wasn't going to cost the taxpayers any money and this was going to be great for everything and, uh, and to oppose it was wrong. But now we see the, the costs that is creating the hardship for some of it. Not that these students don't deserve it. I'm not against that, but, but we need to look at things and, and I don't think there was a lot of thought put into that and they need to be examined on the state level. I know there's limited amounts that we're going to do as a local school board, but that doesn't mean we can't advocate. I have no problems retiring people at the state level. Um, state representatives, state senators, right up to the governor's office.
This is gonna be the toughest question for you. What previous committee experience do you have? And how will it benefit the school district?
All right, let's start.
We have a time limit on the number.
Only 43 years.
What committees haven't you been part of?
Might be a shorter list.
Yeah, school committee.
But I was, I was involved with litigation, uh, on the school roof issue and, um, funny story, real quick, you know? When we started that litigation against General Electric, this is before some people's time, uh, on the school roof and the town roofs and things like that. I was in my twenties. We finally settled it when I was in my thirties. And the lawyer, young lawyer that was working with me, he said, I was in my twenties and now I'm in thirties. And now he's a judge in, in Hoyle that I have great respect for. So just a funny little ad. And it, and another funny story is, uh, when we, um, honored George LeBlanc up at the school and Jerry Fortier was there. And I don't know how many people remember this, but Jerry Fortier got up on the roof. So I, when I, I went up to him and Jerry remembered me, thank God, and I said, Jerry, have you been up on the roof all these years? And it finally decided to come down. Yep.
Well, this is, uh, this is Doug's favorite question. How do you keep abreast of issues that are currently facing the Southwick-Tollin-Grandville Regional School District?
You gotta be involved. You gotta listen to people, you know? You know, I have, already have a relationship with the administration at the school. So I'm, it's easy enough to work with them. But I think it's getting out into the community, you know? Uh, whether you're at Big Y or you're at the drugstore or at the gas station, people come up and talk to you, you know? Uh, social media, uh, reading a newspaper, what the few that are left is a good idea. Uh, but just being aware of what's going on.
Thank you.
Sure. What is your understanding of the role that the school committee plays in the governance of the district?
Well, obviously the laws changed in the nineties that gave the superintendent quite a bit of power. Uh, it does limit, uh, the power of, of local school committees. But I think being that voice there, that's the most important thing. Being that voice there to set policy, to argue for policy, you know? And also, not to be repetitive, going back, advocating for changes in chapter 70, advocating for changes in the funding of regional transportation, advocating for changes in 767.
All right, I have the last.
Last one.
What type of commitment will you make?
I, I, I have a great love for my community. I'm not a politician. I'm a public servant. All right, and that's a big difference. I don't play politics. I serve my community. And I served it. I think I served it well for 43 years in government. And I think I served it well, whether it's at the rec center, the range, Sons of the American Legion Rotary. You know, we, we're always taught as kids, you put more back into your community than you take out. And, uh, I'm a Tommy. All right.
So anything that you would like to sort of pass on to everybody prior to us letting you go and bringing in the next candidate?
Uh, no, I think you guys got it all out of me. We had a few laughs, uh, which is good. That's what it's all about. That's what it's all about. Um, and have fun. It's very unusual being on this side of the table. This is the first interview I've had in many, many, many years. But thank you very much.
You know, I remember the questions from the last time.
Yeah, I memorized them. I think I wrote those, but. The next candidate is Kim Pearl.
Everyone?
How are you?
Superior.
Great, thank you. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good, yes.
Staying dry in here.
Trying.
Roof is holding up, so.
That's a good thing.
Million and a half dollars. I bet it now.
So we have a, a number of questions for you. We have seven questions for you.
Okay.
Um, what we're doing, we're just gonna do it in a little round robin format. Um, at the end, we'll give you an opportunity to sort of make any sort of statement that you would like to do to all of us. Um, and since you're the last candidate, after that, we will have a quick discussion in here and then, uh, appoint somebody in a pretty quick manner usually from what we've done the last couple of times. Um, but we'll start. Desiree, the first question is to you.
Hi, Kim.
Hi, Desiree.
Well, why are you interested in becoming a member of the Southwick-Tollin-Grandville Regional School District School Committee?
I'm really glad you asked that. Uh, can you repeat that?
Yeah.
Um, I have always believed that it's really important that if you have some special skills or some special experience that you should give it back to the community. Um, so as many of you know, from having read my resume and, um, my letter of interest, um, I have spent the past 25 years cultivating a really extensive career in education. I currently own and am president of a national education consulting company that is based here in Southwick. However, we work around the country, um, literally been in schools from Los Angeles to Boston and, uh, currently have contracts in Abu Dhabi, uh, significant contracts with the state department here uh, in Massachusetts, Dusse, um, many school districts, you know, around the Commonwealth, um, really all over. I think the only states we haven't worked on, worked in are Montana and Wyoming, probably. Um, and so I'm going out and sending people to all of these schools, districts, uh, education organizations, state departments of education. We work with Colorado State Department of Education, run their accountability system. Why aren't I giving back in my community here? You know, what can I bring to the Southwick-Tollin-Grandville Regional School District here in town, um, to give back to my community and make the school system, um, some, a place where kids and families truly receive an exceptional educational opportunity? Um, so I'm really excited about the opportunity to do that. I do have, um, 10 years of school, public school board experience here in Massachusetts. I served on the board of City on a Hill Public Charter School in Boston for three years as an appointed, I'm sorry, three, three-year terms as an appointed member and one year as a faculty member. Um, I am a former high school teacher. I taught at Westfield High School and I taught in downtown Boston for many, many years. So I had experience, you know, from the classroom level through policy and now on an educational, a national landscape. And I just really like to give back to this community.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yep. I'm just making sure I got the right number this time.
I was gonna give you a hint, but.
What issues in education are of particular interest to you in the Southwick-Tollin-Grandville Regional School District?
Yeah. Well, um, by nature of what I do for a living, um, I have to pay attention to all the educational issues. And I could talk to you here tonight about high-quality instruction and the importance of building capacity and educators, you know, by leadership within, uh, the school district. However, um, you know, when I think about what's going on here in Southwick, it's really apparent what the issues are to me when I do a cursory review of the data, review the school committee minutes, you know, just look into the most recent article in the paper where, um, superintendent was talking about the budget. review the school committee minutes, you know, just look into the most recent article in the paper where, um, superintendent was talking about the budget pending deficit and, um, you know, Mr. Diddy was discussing about some possible solutions to that. So, um, when I look at what is going on here in Southwick with my professional hat on, you know, I see a lot of opportunity. I see some great things happening. I saw that you recently approved a strategic plan um, for the district, took a look at that, and there are some wonderful things in there. But they're really school, like facing the schools themselves and not really thinking strategically about what the district's needs as a whole are. So when I think about, okay, we've got a budget crisis pending, you know, we're short on funds and I understand that the S R funds are running out and what that means. Those were temporary funds meant to provide emergency services, not meant to be operating funds for the long term. So that's interesting to me that there's a gap there that's been created. And then I hear the superintendent talk about school choice quite a bit and the impact that that's having on the district. And I start thinking to myself, well, what are we doing to attract and retain those students? You know, I just looked today on DUCY's website, um, fifty point two students, I think, last year were in school choice, left the district, represented about three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And so what power would that have if we were able to, you know, keep those students in district in terms of the budget? So those are the kinds of things that I'm thinking about when I look at, um, the school district here and I think about like, what are those pressing issues? Those are the things that I would be asking about if I were a school committee member. Um, now, my first love is academic accountability. So my next questions are about, you know, what's the experience that the kids or the families are getting? I look at the data. I know you all are on the school committee, so you know that less than forty percent of third through eighth graders are meeting or exceeding expectations in English, language arts, and mathematics. It's a similar percentage, um, you know, for the high school, slightly higher at tenth grade. And, you know, I'm looking at exposure to, um, advanced coursework opportunities and things like that. And I see that there, you know, there's a lot of good work that's being done, but there's a lot of room for improvement. Um, and so those are the issues that I see when I think about uh, what's going on in Southwick-Tolling-Grandville Regional School District.
What experience and skill do you bring that qualifies you for this position, these with candle?
Yeah, everybody's got the same. Yeah, 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 yeah. So I know you've all had an opportunity to review my resume. Um, again, I've been a classroom teacher. Um, I have experienced, well, I have a master's degree, um, from Harvard in educational leadership. Um, I have worked at DUCY, uh, for several years. I actually worked there. Um, I, uh, worked at the State University of New York Charter Schools Institute and was responsible for overseeing all the uh, charter schools authorized by the State University Trustees across New York State from Buffalo to, uh, Brooklyn. And now I currently, um, own and operate this national educational consulting company. So, you know, it's my job, as I mentioned earlier, to be really aware of what's going on nationally and locally with regard to, um, you know, the education scene. Specifically, I can point to a couple of things that I'm directly involved in, projects that I'm involved in through my company. So, um, we currently have a three and a half million dollar contract with DUCY to employ sixteen individuals who provide services to the statewide system of support of, uh, and to districts across the Commonwealth um, for school and district improvement. And I engage with them about that contract very, very regularly, do not direct or supervise those employees directly. That's done by Associate Commissioner Charmee Curry. But I'm very well aware of what they are doing, what those initiatives are, just as an example. Um, as I mentioned earlier, I'm involved in the oversight of all of the Colorado, uh, public schools and districts that are on what they call the accountability clock. We make recommendations from the State Board of Education in Colorado about what should happen to those schools as they continue to underperform or hopefully get out of that, um, accountability status as an example. Um, I'm currently involved in the redesign of the high schools in Providence, Rhode Island. They're undergoing a major district portfolio management strategy overhaul, um, working really closely with the district on that component, thinking about how we can actually, you know, they're moving to a PK to eighth grade model, thinking about how we can address the performance of eighth grade, uh, middle school and eighth grade students in particular, which tends to nationally dip. Um, so, so what are some strategies that we can do by combining a PK to eighth grade? And how do we redesign the high schools and the high school options available to Providence public school kids and families so that they're really, you know, enjoying an educational experience, getting the most of it and furthermore, preparing themselves for self-actualized lives after, um, their secondary experience, whether that includes college or many other post-secondary opportunities. So those are just some of the things that I have done to, um, which I think, you know, make me a really informed candidate for this, uh, school committee.
All right. Well, I remember you from Tobacco Also. We worked at Fags together. What previous committee experience do you have and how will it benefit the STGRSD?
Well, uh, when I was on the, uh, public board in Boston for those years, you know, some of the committees that I served on included the academic oversight committee, the governance committee, and the finance committee. Um, I always like to say, you know, with regard to the finance committee, as a former teacher, I'm thinking about every book that the school is buying, uh, that the school district would be buying and the impact of that and the hard choices that need to be made and the resources that teachers need in their classrooms. But I'm also thinking about public accountability for results and being a good steward of the public's money when we're making investments in public education. Um, so I think that's of primary importance here. Um, but beyond my committee experience, again, as the president and owner of this national consulting organization, um, I oversee all the committees within my company and those include, you know, strategic planning. Um, again, we're always looking out for what's coming down the pipe. What do we need to be prepared for? And anticipate our clients' needs and our school district's needs so that we can assist them with it. And so, um, you know, just being part of that, I think, would bring, you know, some uh, divergent thinking potentially to the board. And it's not to mean confrontational, it just means bringing new ideas to the table for consideration. Um, so that's something that I'm super excited about. I also negotiate all of the contracts on behalf of my company. Again, um, some of those are won through public bidding processes, um, procurement processes. Um, but many of them are independently negotiated with independent school districts and I've done and vendors. And so I've done that, um, you know, for my company. I have over thirty employees. That includes all of my employment agreements, um, as well as, um, we have a roster of hundreds of contracted consultants that we work with to accomplish all of this work. And I'll, I go and do all those contracts as well. So I'm assessing the risk of the company and making good decisions about what needs to happen with the company. Um, you know, and as I mentioned in my cover letter, um, I think, again, that's really important, um, during the COVID years when everybody was saying, no, don't come to our school. Like, nobody's allowed in, um, and many of our contracts were paused. Until now, I've managed to double the company's revenue. So I'm really good at bringing money in as well.
Uh, how do you keep abreast of issues that are currently facing the Southwick-Tolling-Grandville Regional School District?
Um, well, as I mentioned, I'm always like keeping abreast of what's happening nationally and, you know, keeping my eyes on the lens of what's going on around the country. Um, but with regard to local needs, um, you know, obviously conversations with stakeholders within the districts. I have two nephews and a niece who now attend Southwick Grandville, within Southwick-Tolling-Grandville Regional School District, um, which is helpful and it's easy to get access luckily now in this, uh, age of technology that we have to the meetings via Zoom to watch school committee meetings, to read the minutes. Um, I'm obviously no stranger to the DUCY website. I've spent a lot of time on there recently, getting caught up to date on, um, you know, the, the district's data. Um, I had a question about some of your school choice data today, so I called Cheryl and had a nice conversation with her at DUCY, so, in the Office of School Choice. So I'm really connected there and, um, you know, have no hesitation navigating the world of information in which we live to really understand what's going on.
Sure.
What is your understanding of the role the school committee plays in the governance of the district?
Um, well, uh, again, deeply understand this as, um, when, as an employee of DUCY, actually, it was my role to train all new school board members, um, in the public charter school sector on their roles as a member of the public board of trustees. So, you know, I understand open meeting law, I understand FOIA requests, I understand all of those things and what the requirements are. But most importantly, I understand that the role of a school committee member is to serve as the first line of accountability and support for the district. Um, and so that entails, uh, recruiting, hiring, supervising, and evaluating, um, the superintendent. It entails, um, uh, setting policy, you know, again, assessing risk, setting the strategic direction of the district. Um, so those are some of the things that I would be focused on.
Right. And last question is, what type of a commitment will you make?
Um, this is what I do for my, you know, life's work. So, you know, I would make the full commitment necessary. I understand that in addition to attending meetings on a regular basis, there are also subcommittee meetings, there are individual meetings that need to happen. Um, I understand that, you know, there's a lot of research that needs to happen, a lot of follow-up, a lot of conversations, sometimes offline. I certainly love, um, to the extent that, uh, it would not be an imposition on, um, the superintendent, district leaders, and building leaders to, you know, spend a little bit more time with them to get to know them and their schools and their priorities as well. Um, you know, I know that, um, I don't know everything, you know, and my company strongly believe that, uh, what makes our work great and what makes us all successful is we bring a national perspective. I bring a national perspective to Southwick. Um, and the people who are working in the schools every day know their community. They know what their opportunities are. They know best what their challenges are. They know their kids and they know their families. And so we truly believe it is a collaboration and a dialogue around, you know, how can we come up with the best possible action, strategies, um, and commitment to resources to move the district forward in a way that's going to serve the students and families best. Um, and so that's my commitment.
Thank you very much.
Anything in addition that you would like to?
Um, I think I pretty much got over everything. You know, I've highlighted my experience. I've highlighted my commitment. I really would love the opportunity to take what I do nationally and make a difference here in our hometown. Um, I think that, um, you know, I'm particularly interested in the question around, uh, how to attract and retain students here in Southwick. Um, I think that Southwick has a huge opportunity, well, say, the school district in general, including the other communities as well. There's a huge opportunity here, um, for us to do something truly unique and special with our schools. We're in an age right now, if you look at the mission statement, you know, that, or the vision statement that you all just approved, that talked about, you know, the ever-changing world and, you know, getting kids and the district ready for that. Um, things are changing very, very rapidly in education as well, not just with the blockbusters turning to Amazons and and streaming services and all of that. But the equivalent of that is happening in education and we all need to get really ready for that. But there's so much untapped potential that I see here, um, with the school district. And I would really love to be a part of figuring out what the next steps that are. So, um, what's the secret sauce going to be here in, in, in the district? You know, it's, you, you've got an amazing agricultural recreational community. I'd love to explore with all of you, given the opportunity, like, how can we make that something unique um, within our schools and within our school district so that as we think about the master plan, as we think about the future of this town, are we truly preparing the kids of this community to thrive and maintain what has been going on here for generations successfully in an ever-changing world with new technologies and new challenges? Um, so I'm, I'm super, you know, excited about the opportunity. I have a background in school design. Like I said, I'm doing some redesign work in Providence and I would really love to engage in those conversations with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That you stepped out or you want me to call the other two and?
I, I don't know. I don't know. How would that work?
I think they stay out, don't they?
Well, it's an open meeting, so you're more than welcome to stay. And anyone else is more than welcome to come back.
We got three really good candidates.
Phew, I'll say.
I mean, that's, uh, that's, I mean, I know last time we did this, Desiree was the only applicant that we had when we had an open position. But I think it's great that we've got.
Three.
Three. It's, it's, uh, it's certainly a great position to be in as a group. You've got three people looking for, I mean, not the most glamorous spot in the, uh, in the hierarchy of, uh, of the, uh, what's up here in the town.
I disagree. Apparently it is.
Where the cool kids want to be, right?
They're breaking down the door.
And we're, we're blessed, right? I mean, I think those were.
Three very different perspectives.
Absolutely, but three really stellar candidates that. Wow, I'm just impressed with all of them. I really am.
At this point, what do we do? I mean, we have.
I'm, I'm looking for discussion. I mean, I, I didn't want to, I mean, this is primarily a obviously is one, two, three, four on two, right? It's a joint appointment, but this is really going to be about the school committee. So I really and, you know, that's why I'm kind of deferring to the chair to lead the discussion and then I didn't set forth the motion there.
Certainly interesting what, what, I guess we certainly have an eclectic group, um, on the school committee now. Um, we've got obviously two other members that are here tonight because of their other two towns. Um, Ted's been on for quite a long time. Pam is obviously an educator and agawam, so it's, I think it's nice to have that perspective. Um, I also think it's important for our town to have other perspectives on the school committee. Um, there are hundred teachers in the, in the district that if we need help, we can always reach out and get opinions anytime, anytime we need. Um, but I was, I was like saying the, the, the variance of backgrounds of what we bring to the table because it's certainly, um, interesting and, and eye-opening when we get involved with the issues that we can and we cannot address. I mean, Kim brought up, how can we attract more kids here? Well, the biggest reason, kids aren't leaving our district because we're not doing a good job. Kids are leaving our district because they're going to out-of-district opportunities that we don't offer and for the most part can't offer, even if we wanted to. Um, we can't offer an aviation program. We can't offer an agricultural program, even though we're an agricultural community. Smithville has got that set up where if somebody is really focused on going into agriculture, the option that they have is Smithville. Um, I think what we're doing right now is, is finding those gaps out there, like Mr. Turell at the high school last year was able to create this pathway for IT, um, which is something that we can explore, that we can and we are implementing. Um, so where we can open it, I think it's great. Um, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I, I, I certainly like on the committee having a varied background. Because I think everybody brings something to that, to that discussion. Um, where when we get Superintendent Wilder's input and we get some from Mr. Turell, it's, it's, we've got a nice group that's in there right now. So adding somebody with, with a, a little bit of a varied background, I think, would be, would be helpful.
And all in all, we're still a pretty new school committee, besides Ted, of course, but we have.
Pop pants in there a little bit.
So we don't have, you know, we don't really know, we haven't been in this position before, like everyone has said, to have three wonderful candidates to choose from. So do we only really pick one?
We can only pick one.
Can you change that so that we can?
No, that would be the, no, it's only seven. It would only have five. That's how it works. The, uh, regional agreement is pretty well locked in stone and it would be very difficult to adjust that.
Can you change that?
Economic development, yes. School committee, no.
To me, I think there's one candidate that can help launch into the future the best out of the three here today.
out of the three here today. Next, someone will have a problem with um the limitation of what school, like
What we can do.
What we can do, yeah. Many think that we can go and change the curriculum. Well, that's not really our that's not really what we are are supposed to be here for.
Yeah, we're here, we're about the children. Uh, that's why I came. This was about the kids in this town or or surrounding towns in our district. And this is about making sure that they are getting a fair, equitable education. So for me, it's 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 about that. This is about the the kids um.
And being held accountable for how the school districts are run, you know, the ultimate decision comes down on us. So who can help us, you know, be that voice between the parents, the children and the school?
With experience.
With experience and also, you know, I don't want to say watch over the superintendent, but realistically
That's one of our major roles is that we've, I mean, one of the questions is what are what are the roles of us? Well, we the number one thing is the budget. We 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 are in a very unique situation um as a regional district that we are the ones that are provided the fiduciary responsibility to manage that budget that gets presented to the towns every year. Um, and it's a very unique setup that from a financial perspective, if it's from the without the uh capital, from a budget perspective, we have two of three towns approve the budget, the budget's approved. No matter what the third town says, even if it's us or if it's Granville, Colom, um, capital equipment, we're gonna have all three. Um, understanding how that works is a big piece of our, is a big piece of our job. Obviously overseeing the superintendents, the other one, and the third is policy. That's really, that's really the nuts and bolts. It is, it is sometimes frustrating in what we cannot do. Um, but we have a limited scope into what we can, what we can fix. Um, it's certainly um to your comment, Diane, it it's almost um the question I've got, see, it's the hearing, um, what Kim does with her company is why is she not working with us? From a company perspective, because there is a lot more from a guidance perspective that may be able to be helpful. Um, from that end, and you can almost open that up where I'm sure she's said that she's has a lot of um, school districts that they're working with to help kind of guide them down that road where that's almost a more effective position to try and get some of this stuff done than through a school committee. Because there, if they hired them, they're bringing them in, they've got results, they've got, they've got recommendations, they've got all these things that they can bring to the table where it's almost a little tougher on our side of it to effect that change. It gets difficult. Um, interesting.
Right, you're right.
That's why I was thinking, I'm like, we like legally, she, if she's on school committee, we can't possibly use her services. So like, she can only do so much from a school committee perspective.
Right.
I think that's a limitation, right?
All right, so does anyone have anything else?
I mean, on the flip side of that part of the discussion, she can also bring you the skills and the knowledge and 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 the guidance to do it ourselves without having to hire.
Yeah, I I mean, I guess the 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 thing is, is that we certainly have right now um, our director of curriculum, our assistant superintendent Jenny Sullivan is doing a really, really good job um, identifying a lot of those, a lot of those pieces. Um, we have revamped and restructured the administrative team in the last year over at the school district. We have a brand new uh principal elementary school. We have two new um vice principals um at the high school. We were able to to elevate the principal Joe Turemal into the business office manager position. Um, they have a very, very strong administrative team over there right now. Um, from a corporate perspective, where I have a lot of experience to be able to promote from within like they did to fill those positions in a small school district was just incredible that they had the right people that could move into those roles. Um, I am very, very confident that they are um going to be able to move the needle. Um, they already certainly have with a lot of this science of reading that they've implemented all on their own.
A lot of new curriculum initiatives started.
A lot.
Yeah, because readings, this is the only our third year of the reading one, math might be only the
Second?
Yeah, I'm saying that too. Science is coming down the track, yeah.
From the state perspective, we're making a lot of, a lot of improvements on the math and reading where a number of the districts in the state are not. They're they're going the other direction because of what they ran into at COVID. Um, they've made some pretty significant improvements there in the math, just even in the last year. When we vetted that science of reading, it's it's been impressive to see the movement on those, on those test results when they're coming back and how they move it. Right. I get nothing else. Anybody got anything else?
Would someone like to set forth a motion? And the motion would be a motion made by blank seconded by blank to appoint blank for the remainder of Mr. Job's term until 2025 is the format. So we can do that rather informally and come back and and uh formalize it, but uh because that's a lot of blanks. So would anybody like to set forth a motion on the table?
I I would like to nominate Russell Fox. Is that, am I saying it correctly or do I need the paper to read it? I'd like to set a motion to set forward. Um, yeah.
I second that motion.
We got, did we get a second?
Yeah, I said it.
Okay.
Any other nominations?
I would nominate from Farum.
Is there a second? Hearing none. There was a motion made by Desiree Maloney, seconded by Ryan Korobkov to appoint Russell Fox for the remainder of Mr. Job's term until 2025. Mr. Stevenson, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mowgli, yes or no?
Yes.
Diane Gable, yes or no?
Yeah.
Robert Stevenson, I'll do my last. Ryan Korobkov, yes or no?
Yeah.
Eric Amelman, yes or no?
Yes.
Desiree Maloney, yes or no?
Yes.
And Robert Stevenson's a yes. Let the record show that motion passes five to one.
I got you.
Well, quit in the superintendent's office. They weren't they didn't do something wonderful in there. I worked there for almost eighteen years and I know from the people that quit what happened to them. So it's not a good thing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Take a couple of minutes here to reset. We have a poll hearing.
So can you fix this work? It just, well, see, well, this is just, I got a hand, it usually just sits on my thigh. Usually have it sitting here.
Maybe just click on You have a folder for the EverSource hearing?
Yes, you've got a folder page here.
Make sure you
It's all the rewrites in there, right? Are you looking at it? Don't miss any.
I just, I don't know which is which.
Just start to think, go to the beginning. There you go. There you go. And I left you a little note, a note sticky.
That's all right.
Right. The agenda eighty-five Granville. That's pretty quick. I didn't see you take it. Just kidding. I think I left it over there.
I think you did.
Okay. Is there anyone here from EverSource tonight?
He's supposed to be on Zoom, but um I don't know his name.
It's Jason Farah.
He said he was gonna be on Zoom.
Oh, did he?
Yeah.
Everybody's been a lot in, right?
Looking so far.
Was he under a different name on this? So you have a lot of people on the list. I don't see many jumping in to to speak up. Do you want me? Yeah, we're only a couple of minutes late.
That's material.
Back to back, right? Yeah.
I would just ask Doug if there's anyone on Zoom that is from there because that's not the name that I'm seeing.
Is there anyone on the on the Zoom call tonight that is here for Verizon or sorry, EverSource for the public hearing for eighty-five Granville Road? And or twenty-five Meadow Lane?
Lisa, do you have his number? Diana's mother. Yeah.
Tell you what we'll do. Why don't we catch up some business while we're doing that? And we'll come back. First, I'd like to acknowledge payroll warrant number twenty-four oh five dated August twenty-ninth in the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents. Acknowledge special payroll warrant two four oh six B dated August twenty-ninth in the amount of four hundred and twenty dollars. And acknowledge payables warrant two four oh seven B dated nine five in the amount of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, ninety-five dollars and two cents. And we need a motion for the open session minutes dated August fourteenth.
I gave Lisa a couple of minor corrections on that, so I would make a motion to accept those with those corrections she already had.
As amended?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, we have two motions.
Oh, did you make a motion? I'm sorry.
She did as amended.
I'm sorry.
That's
I've seconded.
Uh, roll call vote, please. Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Farah, aye.
Diane Gable, aye.
And I need a motion for the open session minutes dated August twenty-eighth.
I'll make the same motion. I gave her a few minor corrections, so I will make a motion to accept them as amended.
And I will second that motion and not make another one this time next.
Roll call vote, Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Farah, aye.
Diane Gable, aye.
Great. We have a uh city town owner contract amendment number two for fifty-two bungalow. I believe we carried this from the uh last meeting because the the cover letter said Brookfield, but we've had that corrected to South. Or I know I
Ratifying.
Yeah, we have to ratify the signature from the contract amendment. I did confirm that it's South with not uh Brookfield and we have not annexed Brookfield.
No, they're not contiguous.
So I need a motion to uh a motion for the chair to sign.
I will make the motion for the chair to sign to be amended form.
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Farah, aye.
Diane Gable, aye.
Cue. We have review and approve application for two one-day liquor licenses, and this is for the Rugged Maniac event on September twenty-third and twenty-fourth over at uh the Legion property by the motocross.
So you you generally make those subject to the approval of the conditions of the police, fire, border health and um uh building inspector if necessary.
Would anybody like to make that motion?
Um, I know we want this to be known on Sunday.
Thank you very much. You are one hundred percent correct.
Jeff Lindquist is on there on Zoom. He's doing twenty-five um Meadow.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Lindquist will be right with you.
Sure, I I'm not for Ver- um EverSource, though. So I don't, uh, I I'm for one of the butters.
Okay.
Uh, so I'm here for that, but I'm I'm I don't think I'm the one you need to start.
I think you are correct. Okay, we'll come back to you. We're gonna come back.
What you would do is if he's not here, you can open it and continue. You can open it and continue it and do the procedure for each one of them individually. Separate votes to open it, separate votes to continue it to to a uh a date certain and then we'll um contact the company and we'll make sure that the person here or other people with the company here. So if you do that, you won't be taking any testimony or you're addressing anybody.
Correct.
So that will be outside of the hearing.
All right, let's close this one out and then we can go back to that.
So the liquor one then?
Yep, no, we want to amend the um the second of the two days that Sunday would start at noon and conclude usually usually earlier, but six is fine. So if anybody would like to make that motion to grant the uh two one-day liquor license licenses subject to approval of the police, fire, border health uh and the building inspector and commencing at noon on Sunday.
So that's on the meeting, that's on the twenty-fourth then?
Correct, twenty-third's fine, twenty-fourth would commence at noon.
I will make the motion to accept the licenses uh chairman Mowgli read off.
Second, Diane Gable.
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Farah, aye.
Diane Gable, aye.
Thank you. Okay, so seeing as we have no one from EverSource on, what we are going to do is we are going to open the hearing um and then continue the public hearing without taking any public testimony. We will continue this to the same time next week unless we have anything else on our agenda at this time next week.
Uh, your next week is the twenty-fifth.
We're not on next week.
We're not.
So Lisa will have to, it'll be the the twenty-fifth and most of the time because you already have a six o'clock appointment, I believe, and the draft agenda.
Okay.
But it'll be, it'll be the night of the the twenty-fifth.
Well, we don't seem to have any problem getting the six fifty, so I think that would be a fair, or we want to make it like six thirty? Make sure we get through all our appointments?
Yeah, if you want to.
Let's do it for six thirty. So I'm gonna read the one for uh eighty-five Granville Road for
So not at first, okay.
Okay. So I need a motion to open the hearing, please.
I will make the motion to open the hearing for the pole and wire hearing for eighty-five Granville Road.
Second.
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Farah, aye.
Diane Gable, aye.
Notice is hereby given in a public hearing held as provided by law. It is hereby ordered that EverSource be and is hereby granted a location for and Notice is hereby given in a public hearing held as provided by law. It is hereby ordered that ever source be and is hereby granted a location for and permission to construct. And maintain a line of poles, wires and cables together with such sustaining protecting fixtures. As said, company may deem necessary in the public way here and after referred to as requested in petition of said company dated eighth day of August twenty-twenty-three. All construction under this order shall be in accordance with the following conditions. Poles should be of sound timber and reasonably straight and shall be set substantially at the points indicated upon the plan marked drawing number. Uh, to be determined filed with and made. Part of said petition. There may be attached to said poles not to exceed twenty wires and two cables. And all of said wires and cables shall be placed at a height of not less than eighteen feet from the ground. Um, and this is for eighty-five Granville Road. And then I need a motion to continue this hearing until, what was that date again, sir?
Yeah, September twenty-fifth.
At six thirty P M.
I will make the motion to continue the hearing for this poll, September twenty-fifth.
Second.
Six thirty, is it?
Sure.
There we go.
Yeah, because we had to do the other one. Uh, roll call vote, Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gill, aye.
Great. Okay. I need a motion to open the hearing. For. I think it's called a poll hearing for twenty-five Meadow Lane.
I will make the motion to open the hearing for twenty-five Meadow Lane.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gill, aye.
Notice is hereby having been given in a public hearing held as provided by law. It is hereby ordered that ever source be and is hereby granted a location for. And permission to construct and maintain a line of poles, wires and cables together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures. As said, company may deem necessary in the public way here and after referred to as requested in a petition of said company dated seventeenth of August twenty-twenty-three. All construction under this order shall be in accordance with the following conditions. All should be of sound timber and reasonably straight. And shall be set substantially at the points indicated upon the plan marked drawing number eight oh four, seven, nine, two, three, five. Filed with and made part of said petition. There may be attached to said poles not to exceed twenty wires and two cables, and that all of said wires and cables shall be placed at a height of not less than eighteen feet from the ground. The following is a pub, is the public way along which the poles above referred to may be erected and the number of poles which may be erected there on. Under this order, address twenty-five Meadow Lane. And now I would entertain a motion to continue this hearing until September twenty-fifth at.
Six forty.
That was what I was gonna say, six forty.
I will make the motion to continue this hearing for twenty-five Meadow Lane to six forty on September twenty-fifth.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gill, aye.
I hope this isn't him now because that would really be stinky. You know what it's gonna be too. Okay. Seven o'clock, Randy, right on time.
God, daughter.
Right, and yeah, and yeah. Mr. Goddard.
Hello, hello, Mr. Brown. How are you doing?
Great, how are you? Annual storm water, storm water report.
Yes, this is our annual discussion about our MS four storm water permit. Doug has that through several of these. Always a portion, I'm sure.
And I'm glad that I had you guys get to share in this experience.
It's a special moment, right?
The place closes at nine, John.
I'm I'm familiar because I had to pay dues.
So there's two documents here. One is our annual report. And the second is our storm water management plan. So the two of these are kind of intertwined with each other. Uh, they basically details a process. Uh, that we follow to implement this M MS four storm water permit. Um, I'll give you a really quick kind of high level overview of the program and what's kind of in these in these documents. Um, these are, we are asking for you to review and approve these. Uh, they do need to be submitted to the state by September twenty-eighth. So if you want to go through them, you have time to do that. Otherwise, if you want to take it, you know, consider it assigned today, that's that's up to you, preview of the board. Uh, but anyways, the the permit, uh, MS four storm water permit. Was put into effect in twenty eighteen. And it laid out a series of steps and processes in which a town had to take to really take a hard look at our stormwater system. Um. Prior to that point, there was another permit that this one replaced. But it was very generic. It really, the the two tasks that we had to do every year were to uh, clean catch basins and to uh, strip all of our roads once a year. And uh, this new permit has uh, is much more in depth, much more involved um, beyond that. Um, we had to take a look at our 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 stormwater system mapping, mapping our stormwater system. We didn't have a whole lot of records, uh, at least on on electronic records prior to that. Um, so actually born at this permit was a position that John fills now as stormwater coordinator. So one of his primary tasks is to implement this program. So in terms of uh, we had to map our stormwater system, we had to take a hard look at our bylaws and regulations. About two years ago, we went through town meeting and updated our stormwater regulations through that process. Um, there's a whole public outreach uh, and education program that we partner with uh, through Pine Valley Planning Commission. And about twenty other communities, we all we all kind of combine in our group efforts to to meet those regulations. Uh, one of John's current tasks is to uh, collect water samples. So during uh, rain events. He's on call twenty-four seven and he tries to get theirs.
With his pick.
Without rock. Flashlight on.
Have you had?
Get that first flush of uh, samples taken at.
Bring out my jacket as I ran in here tonight.
So so taking those water quality samples, uh, take the samples and and doing the work quality analysis, seeing if there are any issues with um. Contaminations. Um, and then based on the results of the water quality results. Um, based on land uses, identifying kind of where the the high, high potential areas are for per contamination. So all that is built into these programs. Um, in addition to that, there's also another nitrogen requirement. So we are in the the Long Island Sound. Waterships, all the water from basically Western Mass, Connecticut, all eventually get it goes and run the the Long Island Sound. And there is a nutrient uh, loading issue in Long Island Sound. So because of that, we have to take measures to minimize nitrogen loading in software. So uh, what have we done this year? Um. Updating our map is a continual process. John's always out looking for um, connectivity between catch basins and manholes. Uh, looking for new outfalls and and acting our stormwater mapping through that. Um, John, you want to talk about some of the sampling we've done?
Just sure. Uh, so originally, or to say earlier in this permit, earlier in my employment and this position, uh. We initially went out and looked at all the outfalls within this permit jurisdiction, roughly speaking, half the town. Um. And look to see if under dry conditions, water was still flowing out of a pipe. Uh, as a first way to quickly screen, hey, is something potentially going on here? Is there a connection to this pipe that shouldn't uh? That's frankly discharging something other than storm water. Uh, most of the time, we've just found that's uh, been groundwater. I haven't found, we'll call it a, you know, live connection just yet. But that then shifts from that dry weather uh, screening opportunity to a wet weather. What happens when the ground is saturated? Um, and to be predicted in the springtime, uh, what happens uh, to real aging septic systems? Uh, is there an opportunity for those uh, pollutants to uh, flow into our stormwater uh, system? And so that's what I'm focusing on with the the fieldwork at this point in time.
You've had ample opportunity during wet weather operations this year.
You know, uh, I think that we all have a very short, you know, focus and it's laser, right? Because. This being a fall to fiscal year, I can tell you, yeah, May through June for sure. When I'm trying to catch up and get ahead on a few things, I didn't get a liquor rain. And although Randy is is kind of a little time machine twenty-four seven, I mean, it has to rain during laboratory hours. Uh, Saturday, let me go this way, six o'clock on uh, in the evening doesn't work. So it's it's been a challenge to get the right uh, rain events. Uh, but I'm grateful that we've had plentiful ones since uh, July.
So 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 this is year five of this permit. And uh, so the permit was actually written for five years. Uh, however, within that permit, there's also requirements that continue beyond year five. So we're actually, we started, we're into now year six. And so that I should have mentioned in the beginning, this permit is co-written by Mass D E P and EPA. Uh, most states in the country, it's managed through the state only. Massachusetts, I think, one of only four, I want to say that, where EPA is is involved. So there's a process that both EP and DP now are are looking at updating the new permit. But right now, we're kind of in a kind of period of limbo where there's no permit that's actually in effect as of today. And that's not unusual. When this permit was implemented in twenty eighteen, I think there was a fifteen-year period.
It was a long time, yeah.
And and again, it just, we just carry over the same tasks that we had to do each year in that twenty fourteen, that two, that's two thousand four permit is what it was written. Uh, and then we had to continue that until twenty eighteen when the new permit was in effect. So there are things that we will have to continue to do over the next few years until this new permit is drafted and and implemented. Um, one of the conditions in year five permit was to identify a nitrogen reduction project. And we did that on a project on Woodland Ridge neighborhood. We we took uh, all the stormwater runoff from the whole neighborhood. And it used to dump into a ring behind some of the houses. We took all that flow and within the middle of that subdivision, there's a a grass area that's town-owned, managed by the Conservation Commission. And it was a great site for infiltration. So.
Flexible residential, right? And that and open spaces.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we took all that flow and we infiltrated it within that open space area. With an, oh, with an overflow towards the the outfall where it was, but that product qualifies as our nitrogen reduction project for year five. We have to do same project in year six and year seven and beyond. We have to identify projects. Um, some of the projects that we talked about, I talked with the board a few weeks ago, some of our um, drainage projects. Um, if remember, we talked about uh, doing improvements on um, Berkshire Avenue and Point Pro Road. I think both of those are also qualify for that nitrogen project. So there's, you know, kind of till kill, till birds of one stone. So we'll continue to look for those types of projects moving forward. Um, until the new permit is is in effect, and it it could take several years. The EP has said they have to have a, they hope to have a draft permit out this fall. I guess we'll.
Randy, is this the subject matter where there's a consortium of communities? That are, have a legal analysis going on as a group? To influence what the wording of the regulations will be when they're finalized?
There is all kinds of stakeholders out there trying to get their.
Through legal, right? Wasn't there, were we part of a many towns that had a.
So yeah, so.
Legal review of it going on?
So going back to twenty seventeen, eighteen, there was a, an appeal filed on behalf of many municipalities. Southwick did not participate in that appeal.
Yeah.
But the appeal was very, very, really limited in scope. It wasn't appeal of the toll permit. It was some very specific language. And I'll be honest, I don't even know how that's played out. I had spent three or four years since I heard anything about that. Um, so there are communities that think that these regulations have gone too far. And on the other token, there are watershed groups and water quality groups that don't think the regulations have gone far enough. And they're also bending the ear of the folks at DEP and EPA. So they're trying to maybe find a happy medium. If there is one between both sides uh, when drafting these regulations. Uh, because last time there was a lawsuit and, you know, I guess, I guess it's likely that it would be more or less.
So I think that what we should afford too for the board, and especially the finance could be, is whether it constituted an unfunded mandate. And sometimes if you do it under the guise of it being a federal regulation. Then you may be relieved from tripping the threshold under our laws if a state agency is doing that.
Correct.
And that was an outgrowth of proposition two and a half. It said to the people, you know, we're gonna start, we're gonna have a revenue cap on you, but we're gonna start figuring out things that you have dollar exposure for. And the dollar exposure that you're gonna have is if it's coming from the state. Then it should be attached with, you know, resources because it would be deemed an unfunded mandate. You know, so.
The EP did have some hesitations signing off as a coal permitting five or six years ago. They ultimately did. But they had some reservations at the time. So I know there's a lot here. I again, this is a really high level review. Um. Are there any questions that you want to talk about specifically?
I guess the Carl kind of touched on the thing I'm going to be worried about. Is this. Going to eventually result in a stormwater management fee like everywhere else is starting to put in place?
It's hard to say. So the first, the way I I see the first five-year permit, the one that just ended, is they really want you to take a look at your stormwater system, identify. The weaknesses. Um, that's yours, one through five. Okay. And then year six and beyond is now they're saying, okay, well, now you know where your weaknesses are. weaknesses are, now you gotta fix it. And that's where the the costs come in, the construction dollars. You know, what we've done so far is a lot of uh, analysis, testing, sampling. Um, mapping efforts. But if we identify. A source, you know, we have to, there are requirements to to fix it. And it could be a simple fix or it could be very, very costly, depending on what we find. So far, we don't have anything that's, you know. Outrageous, so.
Randy, you were going to the MMA conference a few years ago and they had seminars on these things. And I think, what was it? It was a bill.
Worcester.
The estimate to to comply with this was a billion dollars.
I believe that. I thought it was multiple billions. It wasn't one singular billion.
You know, once you hear the word.
Yeah, right. You start to tune out, right?
It's a need.
Yeah.
You know, no context.
Right.
So you're you're here running the public works for this Worcester. You know, just to the point where he was involved and, you know. And going to these seminars and educating the rest of the municipalities in Massachusetts and. And then I think, wasn't there somebody from EPA had come and said, oh, we're gonna give you.
That was what I was gonna say.
Remember, and then we we followed up on him next year and he had retired.
Yeah. First guy went, so what does this mean? What do we have to do?
Right.
Huh, nothing. You'll have to just sweep your streets twice a year.
Right.
Okay, it has nothing to do with sweeping your streets at all. I mean, that we do it as a matter of course, but at the end of the day, this it. This goes back five, six, seven, eight years ago now, but we're, there was millions of dollars in numbers just for us to do the work. That we had to pare back and kind of push back and bootstrapped to get done. Um. You know, and then fund this position here and then other things that we've done. But it it's onerous. And and by the way, I I was remiss. I I wanted to thank you for your. Response, even while you were on vacation regarding um, the Supreme Court case, I think it was Sackett, right? Um, because that made headlines fairly recently about how that may or may not affect. You know, what determines what are tributarial waters to. Larger navigable bodies of water, et cetera. And they're all stemmed out of, I think, a case in the Midwest, right? About somebody put a pond on their yard, turned into a wetland, and the EPA said you can't put your house here now and. Um. It went all the way to Supreme Court and the the gentleman won, but it has, it could had ramifications. Nationally.
Sure.
Around some of this. And you know, what are tributarial waters? What are navigable waters? The Long Island Sound's a no-brainer. That's a navigable body of water, but. You know, when you start to look at smaller bodies and and that don't have visible outs that lead to a greater body, then the EPA. Jurisdiction may be more limited than it was previous. So but I did ask Sabrina and um. Randy, and Randy specifically regarding this MS four, because that is a federal permit under this, and you know, they're. I don't know if it's gonna make a hell of a difference, and you're right.
We follow mass D E P regulation, which wasn't affected by Sackett anyway, so.
Correct.
So some some states follow EPA's regulations. They don't have their own state regulations. So those are probably more affected by that decision than than.
I would agree.
This would be. But getting back to what you, Jason's question, um, you know, a lot of communities do have stormwater permits fees that they use to fund this program.
Mm-hmm.
We've been funding it through the general tax rate, you know, and luckily we've been able to manage and and get by. Um, but when there's new permits in effect, I guess we'll see what the new conditions are.
I know some of the towns around have started regulating what types of fertilizers and stuff you can use. And I know the big pushes now to get away from the phosphate-based and nitrogen-based ones. So, I mean. Is that's, I mean, down the road, if was that something we'd have to look.
All of that.
We we do, so through the.
Kind of a warning to people that this is coming.
Yeah, we we, our 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 efforts so far have more been the public outreach in terms of more fertilizer use, especially with the landscapers, not necessarily the homeowners themselves, but through landscaping companies. There's been outreach to them about it.
I think it's time to let the homeowners know too.
That's also one of my questions, though. What is that continued education and outreach? What do you do and to? How do you do it? What vehicles do you?
So we, so through the Pine Valley Planning Commission, there there's a Connecticut River Stormwater Committee, which we are one of about twenty or twenty-five other communities all within our region. And the big effort that we threw that committee is public outreach. So there's uh, public service announcements. They do, um, they're in the past, they've been, I think, radio ads, there've been billboards. There've been um, billboards on highways, there's been billboards on um, the P V. There've been um, billboards on highways, there's been billboards on um, the PVTA buses. Um, we've sent out letters to local landscapers uh, that they've helped us draft. Um, even uh, pet waste, you know, a couple of years ago, when you go buy your, uh, your, buy your dog license, we had a little flyer, you know, they had that. Give it here, gave out here at the town clerk's office, uh, you know, pet waste education. Um, those are types of things that we, you know, kind of do every year. Um, every year we target different audience and we kind of. You know, work our way through the program. So every couple of years, it's probably recycles through that same audience.
That was my concerns. So John, what page and file is?
I think we should take a third, was it?
Well, there's, I think, all three of you.
That's correct.
Read it last night.
Stormwater management plan, although covers many, many aspects, the only updates to this, for this cycle are just. Related to mapping. Where I found some new outfalls, we updated list and we identified as a vulnerability factor for it. So this document is largely static.
So the readers I just, I just took from that is that I've read that. So I just need the updated maps. Just kidding.
It is a living document, but it's.
Do they have it in audiobook?
You're gonna have to take a long drive.
Studying for certain things, so.
So I, I would like to carry this to, to next meeting. We have a meeting before it's due. We'll get it timed for you, but I wanted the chance to review the changes and. Um, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lie, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I will read the. The, the changes and then um. The significant differences in the document.
So we can leave these with the.
No need to make. For all of us, Carl.
Yeah, don't.
We can share. Just so you know, I don't want to come in and have my jaw fall on my leg tomorrow. Thank you.
We'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Well, they may believe that, um, I told Randy I was gonna drive this discussion. And you see, uh, he took it, so.
Yeah, cost savings, like we saved a lot having John in this role, taking care of all. Because we, otherwise we would have had a sub out that worked through a contractor.
I mean, I remember the first time we looked at this, I mean, it kind of blew our doors off the first time. You came in front of us with like a, you know, the work to be done and the rough numbers around it. We're like. Okay, any other cities and towns have adopted a. I hate to call it a rain tax, but that's, you know, what it is. Yeah, you know, and they've avoided having to do that till now. And, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that we can continue that. And whether you call it that or you build it in the tax rate, you know, we're building most of it into the tax rate. Um.
It's quite a discussion for several budget cycles.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Concern they were and emotional. Yeah. About an unfunded mandate.
It, it is, but you know, and it's an important endeavor, no doubt. You know, and, and how we control stormwater and, and stormwater design and um. And, you know, making sure that we're doing our part without, you know, pricing people out of their homes at the same time. It's, it's a delicate balance. Yeah. So I'm gonna say about that. I've had, there was a lot of discussion going into this week's discussion around. Other things as well. And it, you know, there's a lot of balancing that goes on. You, you've been party to the budget process painfully, you know. For many years and you have to balance all of those priorities. And sometimes, you know, there are stakeholders in one thing that they're laser focused on a thing. And, you know, as this board and the finance committee and others have to take a look at the, the totality and, you know, sometimes be rather solemn. Solomon like, if you will, and. I guess if you come out of it and no one's happy, you've done a good job, but. This is, this is something that's gonna continue to come and we're gonna have to continue to address it. So.
It's kind of like where I was going with this kind of, I think it's just a matter of time, I mean. And just, you know, people make a little bit of knowledge that it may be coming blunt to. The, the pain a little bit when we get to that point.
True, but there's also the piece of, and I, I think it's excellent. You noted it and it, it's kind of a. The outreach part could be a huge piece. You know, people use the recommended amount or less than the recommended amount of certain fertilizers and. Stuff and they don't spread it in the street, you know, while they're spreading it. Boy, that can really help because then it does go into the soil and help the plants that it's supposed to help. And doesn't get washed down the drain and in directly into the, the water bodies where it gets caught and sampled. When John's out there in the middle of the night sampling the rain, right? And it, it can be a huge, and if people pick up after their pets, right? It, it absolutely has a direct impact on, on water quality and it could have an, you know, a, a concrete benefit to. The overall financial health of your community just by doing your piece, right? And it, it becomes bigger than, um, you know. Than the whole thing. So I think it's just important to, to continue that outreach and continue to do it. Obviously, if we're gonna have to go down this path at some point and we're gonna have a larger discussion when. When these, these permits never get lesser, right? They just never do. We, we know that, right? Correct, but. But we, we've kind of staved it off, if you will, as, as, as just, you know, applying a blanket. Everybody pays X dollars per square foot of roof or impervious or whatever. And now you've got this pile of money to go and do something with, right? We've been able to carry it on the tax rate with a, a still a reasonable tax rate. With all the other priorities that we're trying to do, right? The ambulances still show up. We've gone full ALS. You know, we funded the schools, we funded the police. We funded the seniors, but you, you know, we just saw here, that's what I was looking to, you know, the senior center, we need a new place. Great. The schools want this, you know, we need this. We still buy new plow trucks and all this other stuff. You know, we have to continue to balance all that stuff out. Um, and do it as the costs increase and the amount of things that we need to do increase. It just. Becomes that much more of a challenge. But we never back away from a challenge, do we, John?
Good to rise up to a challenge.
Awesome.
Look, please reach out to me.
I welcome the opportunity. Another challenge.
I walk in John's office at least three times a week.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, we had covered this once in an earlier meeting. This is uh, on, it was Berkshire Avenue, fifty-eight Berkshire Avenue.
Yeah, you authorized the, at a previous meeting, so.
So we actually have the agreement, um, updated agreement. And so this is a land revocable license agreement between the town of Southwick and David C. Brooker and Dorothy J. Brooker.
Yeah.
Um. It's an access license, right?
Yeah.
So.
We just need that the town uses for access to the, the lakes, I mean, in case Randy needs it. For driving the road, so it's, it's fine with it.
Okay. So I need a motion to sign.
I will make the motion to sign the land license, land use license agreement for, what was the address number?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight Berkshire.
Second.
Roll call vote. Doug Moglan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Sandra, aye.
Perfect. Okay, we need to acknowledge and accept the following donations to the Southwick Animal Control Shelter. Oh, this is a fantastic list. Alpha Oil, fifty dollars. Lisa A., hundred dollars. Patricia B., a hundred dollars. Rosca and Sons Plumbing, one hundred dollars. Jacqueline F., fifty dollars. Susan and Leonard. F., sixty-five dollars. Carrie L., fifty dollars. Lemonade Stand, seventy-five dollars. A bless. David P., thousand dollars. Hannah and James P., fifty dollars. Linda R., fifty dollars. Rosewood Consulting, one hundred dollars. Saint Francis Mount Sinai Behavioral Health, one hundred dollars. Gary S., one hundred dollars. For a total of one thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Make your motion.
I would, please.
I'll make the motion to accept the donations for the Southwick Animal Control Shelter from all the named parties.
Second.
Roll call vote. Doug Moglan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Sandra, aye.
So can you just give that to Randy?
Steve.
Good evening. Hey, two very nervous young men who would like to sit for a quick interview with you.
First, I want to thank you for the ceremony today. It was, it was very moving, very well done. Appreciate you guys continuing that tradition for the last twenty plus years.
Thank you. I think everybody attended a great turnout. A lot of organization from a lot of people, wonderful city. Of course, I think it's also important to mention. The uh, grant that we received today as well too, um, under the cover of the working on that with. Senator Baldiga and Senator Marcus well too. And that certainly was a surprise to us to have that awarded today.
Yeah.
Extra bonus, but very well. Well, appreciated, well thought out. And I know they all worked hard on it, but appreciate that as well.
Excellent. Twenty-five thousand dollars, correct?
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
What was the number? You mentioned it during our, in passing almost, but it's kind of a shocking number. Set a turnout gear for one firefighter?
Yeah, so for the time you get, the whole ensemble, which includes the turnout pants, the jacket. Um, the hood, the helmet, the gloves and the boots, it's almost four thousand dollars.
Wow.
And that's, that's an increase of almost a thousand dollars since last year, at the same time. When you put everything together and the lead time is still three to six months out for the, for the year.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah. We're very fortunate. We do have a company we rent from to kind of tide us over and they've been very reasonable and very responsive, so. That helps us kind of cover that gap a little bit.
Buddy has an interview on with uh, Mr. Didi and Mr. Putnam. And they were talking about the gear that they used to wear and I'm pretty sure it didn't cost three grand.
Nope, I still have my original helmet. It's nothing like the helmet now.
While you're grabbing these two, I'll, I'll throw in a free plug. I mean, they've been doing this kind of um. Visible storytelling series, Mr. Putnam, Mr. Didi, and having some um, town elders. Yeah, it's kind of a, just a visual history type of project. And it had been done years ago, there was um. I don't even know who recorded it. It was about the lakes and folks had grown up on the lakes, but now they've had um, some of the Arnold's on. They had Buddy and Chief Anderson record uh, a segment and a few others. Um.
Mrs. Spanish.
Mrs. Mister, yeah, Mrs. Spanish, that was very entertaining. Um, just, they're just great stories and they're. I'm so glad that they're being preserved and, and presented, so. Um, that was a good segue. I tied it thirty-four seconds.
So everyone, this is Eric Hayes, young man. He was uh, signed up for Call Firefighter with the department.
How are you?
You're good.
You're a man of many words, I see.
Yeah.
This is gonna be the, this will be the easiest interview we're doing tonight. I'll tell you that right now. Tell us a little bit about yourself, sir.
Well, I uh, grew up in Southlake and currently live in Southlake. Um. I went to the Southlake schools. I am currently as stick going to school for being a firefighter. I, I've always wanted to be a firefighter ever since I talked to my good friend who actually worked as stick and. He, you know, kind of told me, you know, if I like helping people and if I like. Doing physical work and et cetera, you know, if I should be a firefighter. And ever since he kind of told me that, I, I looked more into it and I wanted to learn more. So then I started taking the classes as stick. Um, right now I work at a full-time job. At uh, in Springfield. Uh, it's a warehouse company. And I'm just kind of working to make money in the meantime and trying to learn more about firefighting and getting on the job and going from there. Um. I, I love, uh, I love sports. Um, I'm always, I'm always rooting for USA, of course, and uh. I uh. I like to um, kind of. Like, you know how people will watch sports, but they'll watch it to represent their company, other country. I'll watch it because I love it and I want to kind of learn more about it and, you know, even though I, I know soccer and I, I love and I, I played it all my life. There's still things I want to know more about it. So, because I'm just going to school for uh, for be, for to become a firefighter. I don't want to just go to school. I want to then get hands on while being a, a, on call. So I get as much information as, as possible.
Excellent. Have you got to firefighter one or firefighter two yet at the academy?
No, I've not.
Excellent. Plan to?
Yes.
Let me answer my questions. You're planning on going, you want to be a firefighter? That's a great thing.
Yeah.
I tell you, go that way or not the police route? I'm ready to bail.
Yeah.
Three years. Not that I'm counting the time.
I have no questions. You. Few words, but you summed it up very well. Thank you.
You want to be a call firefighter?
Yes.
So what's standing between you and being a call firefighter? Mr. Perron?
Uh, I would like to make motion to um. Uh, appoint Eric Hay, um, Haynes or Hayes? Eric Haynes as a call firefighter. Because what you select.
I'll second that.
Doug Moglan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Sandra, aye.
Now there's nothing standing between.
Subject to.
Subject to the yadda yaddas. He got to do all the rest of the stuff he tells you to do. Welcome to the Southwick Fire Department.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good stuff again.
I got a smirk.
I know, I know it.
He said they were scared.
I know.
Oh, just like I said, I've sat on that side.
Our second candidate is Darryl Gagney. Okay, is the other guy okay?
He's fine.
He's gonna be all right?
He's not, he's not gonna breathe it right now.
Okay.
This one's smiling.
Okay.
Yeah.
Darryl, you ready?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, you saw the other guy leaving, right? It's not that bad. I promise. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Um, so my name is Darryl. Um, I grew up mostly in Agawam. I moved around a lot when I was younger, but. In sixth grade, I got to Agawam and I ended up ultimately graduating there. Uh, when COVID hit, I moved to West Springfield. And then eventually to Westfield where I now reside. Um. I've really always been driven towards um, the fire service. Um, it kind of started younger when my aunt had a house fire and just seeing them do their thing, that's just, it's just kind of mind blowing at that moment. Um, I kind of drilled into, that's, seems like something I'd want to do. Um, I got when I was younger. Fourteen to eighteen, I had the opportunity to be an explorer in Agawam. Uh, which kind of gave me a foot in the door to kind of see and get a little hands on, obviously not the full experience because I was a child still. Um, and the more I worked with it and then. I got on the toll and from seventeen to eighteen when COVID hit. Um, and that's when I knew for sure that this is something that I've. Ready to dedicate my life towards them. For sure with a full-time career.
Excellent. So your long-term career plan is to become a firefighter?
Yes, sir.
Do you have your BLS now? Are you an EMT?
I do now. I have my EMT. Uh, that is one of the steps I need to take to. Get on full-time pretty much anywhere now. Um. And I've always enjoyed Southwick. It's a, a nice town to be in and people are nice. Um, so. I would like to end up here full-time if the opportunity arose. Um. But, yeah.
Again, um, Mr. Gagne?
Uh, yes, sir.
Um. Is it Gagney or Gagne?
Gagne or Gagne, I think it was one. Not too picky.
We're gonna need it for the minutes. How do you pronounce it?
Uh, Gagney.
Okay. Yeah, no, you've answered all, all my questions. You know, I'm glad to see that you're, you're interested in what you want to do and you, you have a focus on where you want to go. And I'm not gonna make fun of my career again, but uh, I do love my career. Let everybody know that. I'm just, after twenty-six years of. I'm, I'm getting tired. So. Um, no, I'm very happy. Thank you, Derek.
I'm good. I'm good.
How do you know Mr. Marifuga?
Um, so funny story. I was coming home one night and Esan met up from a friend's house. My dad picked me up. And I came across um, an. and I came across, um, an accident scene where there were some individuals that were pretty banged up. So when I was rendering aid to one of the victims in the crash, I met Mike because at the time he was working full-time at Easton Meadow. Um, and later on, I ended up reconnecting with him because I worked at Noble at the time. And we kind of grew to become friends and he's grown to a friend and a mentor. He's walked me through the steps pretty well and convinced me to kind of put my foot out there and go for it.
We've never met before tonight, correct?
I don't think so.
Ever. No, that's a straight up guess. You can answer no to that, correct? I just saw his name on here. That's a fantastic story. That's incredible. So what's standing between you and becoming a member of the Southwick Fire Department?
I think I know.
You guys saying yes?
I like that.
That's one hundred. That is the right answer.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Darryl Gagne as the call fire. Call firefighter.
Second emotion.
And a roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Now there's nothing standing between you and becoming a call firefighter.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Likewise, you hope you answered.
I like that.
You saying yes.
Mike, that's a good story, too, will ya? You know, I tell he's he's pretty amazing. I I only I don't know him all that well, but every time I run into him, it's something like this or yeah.
Lots of energy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe everything that's on my agenda.
Up to this point.
New business for me? Yeah, you're asking me, Darryl?
Yep.
I like he's applying his personal experience to it.
Yeah.
That's impressive to take the initiative.
The guy.
Something you don't have really any training for. But you know what you want to do.
It's not. It is not. It is absolutely not. Okay. You want to do new business first?
Before an old business?
Sure, sure.
I just figured we'd mix things up every now and then. All right, we're gonna try to be done by nine. I saw you look up. Okay, new business. Boarding Committee Onboarding and Duty Statement Discussion from Goals and Objectives List. Now that was.
That was me. You got a two-pager, an outline?
Yes.
Share mail today.
Correct.
This is just to give you, this is where I'm envisioning it going. This one. The outline? So this is where I'm envisioning this. Call it a handbook for onboarding for uh, members of boards and committees that we appoint. And there's a lot in this outline. This would be fleshed out and reviewed by everybody as it progresses.
You know, on the one of the established MGLs.
Like wasn't we just did that for on the onboarding.
Right, you were doing that with Ben and Michelle. So that information. We have someone.
Yeah.
Of course, I'm sure we did.
Okay.
But I just want to have a handbook for people.
Which ones the first boys to do there now?
I mean, I would like you guys to review this and, you know.
Okay. It's excellent. I think it's a good idea. You put some work on it.
We've, I know it's come up in different times, even over the last year or so, but we need to a lot of people will come in here and say, well, I don't know what I'm doing.
A lot. They need some guidance and and this won't be all the answers, of course, and it'll always, you know, refer back to you know, Carl or.
Case by case discussion.
Yeah, for, yeah, yeah. But if you that we have really nothing, we need something. And many, many towns do have such a obese.
So we can borrow from them, too?
Of course.
Okay.
Of course.
Now you're talking my language.
Of course. And I would be happy to continue this, but I would like your feedback first before I
Sure.
dive right in and fill it out.
Be glad to give it. Yeah, I want to get a chance to review this in a little more detail, but yeah, no, that's a great idea. Thank you. And it'd be interesting in, I'd like to think about how how to do that.
How to do what?
How to give this information, how to make this information available easily.
So people.
Like, can it just be right on the website?
It's absolutely.
You know what I mean? Instead of having a booklet or a handbook or something, you gotta copy it that sometimes. That type of.
And eventually reside as as constant.
So it's available to the public as well as
Correct.
So they know how things happen as well.
Exactly. I'm glad that you thought that through. Awesome. Okay.
So I will wait for your feedback.
And now they're chuffing our papers.
And that'll go, that'll move from new business down.
Old business. So it's gonna be carried forward.
And then do we want to talk about protocol here? Or you want to, this was another thing that came this afternoon, I believe, in email. I think this is a good discussion to have. This is actually going to be, I think, a much more of a a discussion.
Did bring up better luck. Yeah, that's under old business.
Yeah. It's under old business.
Yeah, that was in my mail folder. Okay, great.
Trying to mix it up.
Nope. Okay, no, not at all. All right, so acknowledge invite from COA Director Cindy Sullivan for Annual Flu Clinic on October fifth from nine to twelve. Sign-up functions will be retained at the Council on Aging Center. So if you need a flu shot, October fifth, nine to twelve. And don't fall for it again. Let the nurse give you the shot, not Cindy.
That sounds scary.
I know.
Did I miss something?
I'll be here all week. Try to be. All right.
Not sure if I missed something.
Other new business. Carl?
Sure, I just want to let the board know that last Thursday, myself and the new Emergency Management Director, Mr. Anderson, and I went over to Agawam and we met for new, um, governor's appointment, uh, to the Emergency Management Agency. And, uh, you know, the assistant who is familiar to us because we've dealt with him before. So, uh, we spent a couple hours over there with all the other area um, EMDs, police and fire executives and town administrators listening to the different programs and what's going on so that we could put a face with the name. Their name is Don Branton. Great, so. So that was good to do that. And then the other thing is the, uh, working with the, uh, um, the Assessors Office as their outside consultant been and they're working on all the various LA forms for the, uh, Mass Department of Revenue Tax Rate Setting process. So that's actively underway and we're just going through that process and we hope to have something to, um, um, to load into the portal and the gateways through Laura's office and at some point you'll have to come in and sign off uh, the various, uh, forms that relate to your functions and budget setting process, which is a final step in outgrowth of the budget that was adopted in May. Thanks a little for getting to it.
Diane?
I have something. Related to the town meeting in May, we had the Article sixteen, the Concom elected officials. I did get a copy of the feedback from the Attorney General's Office that says, uh, basically that is not for them to say and it needs to go to a special act, which we knew. Um, and refers it back to Town Council. So do does the treasurer, collector, clerk need to or just Town Council need to put this to the right form to get through the legislature? Where, how does that go?
That it, yourselves, her role is to just submit things that are passed and so forth. It's the role of the board to take what comes out of this and you have to have a discussion amongst yourselves about whether or not you want to advance that to be addressed through that other mechanism. Um, that the Attorney General says has, um, recommended and what Ben informed the voters at town meeting about. So that's, that's the board's priority.
So do we if it was voted by the town to do that, the way to do that is via a special act?
Right, that's the, that's the recommendation on the line.
Do we need to?
Back at your board.
I have a question. So does that mean we have to go back to town meeting?
That was gonna be my question.
Right, so it's my opinion, and I made in my my opinion clear at town meeting that I didn't feel that the that the citizen petition was in compliance with Mass General law. I believe the Attorney General's ruling is that. If you if you want to reduce the authority of the Select Board, then you would have to go back to town meeting to request town meeting to ask for a special act of the legislature in order to have the conservation composed differently than, uh, Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section eight, nine, but I don't have the number in front. Not in compliance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section eight, C.
Eight, C.
Thank you. I was in the right book.
Because that's what your code book, it's organized now one under the as a local exception some of the code book.
Yes.
That's how the conservation came.
We know that.
Correct, so. From.
We know that. The voters wanted to change that. We're past what we know. We know that.
Right. Then it's up.
And it is the role of the Select Board to forward what the town voted at town meeting. Well, how do we do that? I don't think it's our prerogative whether we're going to do it or not. It is our duty to do it. It was a vote.
It's still your choice. But that's, that's up to the three of you to discuss.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to advance it. It is what the town voted. I don't know what that next step is.
My opinion, and if we can talk to Town Council, it's my opinion that you in order to reduce, to to change the way that we adopted Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section eight, C, you would need to send a warrant article to town meeting. The town meeting would have to to request a special act of the legislature in order to have our Conservation Commission elected other than other than it's proscribed in Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section eight, C. If that's your, that, so then you would then have to have town meeting authorize a special act. Then you, then you would ask that vote would then go to your legislators who can then act upon that to create a special act in order to change for Southwick and Southwick only, how our Conservation Commission is comprised.
Right, it's a home rule of mine.
A home rule of that, correct.
So let me clarify on this. I want clarification. What exactly did the Attorney General say? That it's not their purview? Is that what they stated?
Correct, and you have it right in front of you, but.
We take no action on Article sixteen because it is not a bylaw amendment and is therefore not subject to the Attorney General's review. The article does not reference adding or amending a bylaw and we are not aware of any provision in the town's existing general bylaws related to the Conservation Commission members. The town will need, and then further, the town will need a special act to authorize sudden an election of Conservation Commission members. The town should consult with Town Council regarding this issue.
Which is already done? Am I not mistaken?
Well, we haven't done it.
Since this ruling.
We haven't, as far as I know.
Just got this letter.
We talked to Town Council about a special act.
So what are you making a motion to talk to the Town Council to start this special act? What you're investigating, research?
To move it forward, yes.
Well, and I will make, I'll second the motion to begin the the process to research as to how we do this.
The next step.
And then we can discuss that accordingly. Once we hear from Town Council, I would guess.
Well, let's hear the, let's hear the steps.
Yes.
Was there a motion?
I did. I made the motion.
Is there a second?
Well, I, I made.
Oh, gee, I'm sorry.
That's what I was asking. I was making sure I have it somewhere. Your second.
Yeah, did I second it? I, my mind's a little bit somewhere else, obviously, after.
Okay, so then it's a roll call vote. Doug Mogul, no.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye. And then who does contact Town Council?
I will be doing that.
Just making sure. And that's what I had for new business?
The only, I guess it it's kind of a new business, old business. I just would like to bring up several meetings ago about that we started and, uh, signed me the begin the research into the municipal charging stations. I've reached out to Vesco and Charge Point. Um, there's, there's numerous companies. Um, but I know also Select Board Member Gail was also given the green energy assignment, so I don't know if this is something that I should turn over to Ms. Gail or stay on top of after or get the information that I've already, when I get recontacted and pass that off to Diane or continue going forward with it on my end.
We haven't had a second meeting to actually put in any projects yet.
Yeah, we can in a few weeks. I mean, we were, you know. Everybody's off doing their own individual research right now on things that might make, you know, sense for that process.
But, yeah, so that was kind of a new.
Yet for.
You know, we don't for the meeting and but I, and I also got for the committee historical services for the, uh, we just plan to meet.
Correct, and that's gonna come up under old business, yeah.
Right, so long.
So, I mean, if you're in the middle of some discussion with people, I would, you could go ahead and if if we do, then.
Yeah, just give the committee the information.
Yeah, that's, but I just, you know, where that was kind of pointed in my direction.
Question on this, is that allowed? What are you thinking of a location for it? Because I drive an electric car, so I'm just kind of thinking like location-wise, do you have something in mind where you want to go?
Now, these would be, you know, right now I'm focusing strictly on my municipal properties. Um, I think that obviously anything that's on private property would have to be discussed with.
Yeah, no, I, my concern is I don't want to see something put at the school where someone would go and park their car for like, I mean, because a lot of the chargers are very slow charging. We'd have to actually leave your car for six hours if I want to see something. Going up to the school and wanting to leave their car parked in a public school where, you know, people can't walk on the track and it was a safety concern. Keep that in mind as you're looking. It's not like you drive up. It's not like a Tesla charger where you drive up and plug your car in for twenty minutes. Most of the chargers that are out there, they're a charge point. Charge for six hours or give you twenty miles in an hour. And so we need to kind of just keep that in mind as you're planning on where you're gonna put up, you know what, something someone parking their car at the elementary school or the high school, say, oh, I'm gonna go use this charger. Safety issue.
Thank you. Any other new business?
I have none.
I have one. October fourteenth. Mark your calendars. Twelve o'clock, Wally Park. Southwick Fire Department versus Southwick Police Department. Charity softball game to raise money to support breast cancer research. If you can't be there to room on, the Fire Department and the Police Department are will be accepting donations. This is a cause that's also near and dear to my heart. If I can step aside, I did ask my employer to step up to support that and I will be matching their donation in this endeavor. It's an extremely important issue and something that um, probably has affected every single person in this room in one way, shape, or form. So this is kind of a good, fun way to raise money, have a little fun, blow off a little steam. Um, again, October fourteenth, noon, Wally Park.
Actually, as a reminder, you also have the. Actually, as a reminder, you also have the Rotary Steak Roast.
I was getting to that. Is this Wednesday?
Well, you only said you had one thing, that's why.
I never have one thing, Carl.
He just said.
I know, but I never have one thing. The Rotary Steak Roast is this Wednesday, what time?
Oh, six o'clock.
Six o'clock, and you guys both got an email this afternoon, and now your phones will forever explode forty times a day.
Yeah, corporate member of Rotary Club.
Mrs. Miles has already has my phone number and I've received, I just last year I was with my employment. It's just kind of hard to balance those things. I'm tired of so.
Wanted to make sure we put it out there since we have that on the status.
It's not a, it's not a matter of wanting, it's just a matter of being able to.
Okay, and that's all I have for new business. I have a few items under old business, so let's go through that. Uh, Sewer System IMA with City of Westfield, we're still waiting on their attorney. Our attorney?
No, theirs.
Theirs.
I think it's, it's going to the, I believe it was going to the appropriate city council subcommittee.
Okay, Marijuana Dispensary Research and Options.
We pass that up to Planning Board. I know they've made.
I think they scheduled the hearing already.
Nineteenth, is it?
Yeah, I, I believe there was a legal end, that they are following that process scheduling in this.
For the public hearing and then from that point forward, I guess. No, I believe it's this morning.
We have them legalized.
Okay, we paid to put it in this paper.
Muni Aggregation, any updates this week?
Nothing, still waiting to get, uh, did you get anything for Beth? I didn't.
No, not yet, but what I did is I, I reminded Ben that we're, we were looking for that issue as well as the municipal light plant thing, and I got that today.
I saw that.
Yeah, because that was discussed fully at that town meeting, and we had to figure out, you know, what the procedural steps were. And the first two are already being taken care of by the, by the Treasury Collector's Office. So while I was dealing with that one, I did ask them to do the other thing, cause after Jason and I and others that met with, um, Colonial Power and Beth's company, we did get a, uh, uh, their, uh, agreement document as well as the stuff I think that they like to use with the vendor that they help us, you know, selected partners. So those things have been sent to council. So we have not received any follow-up guidance or, um, yeah, suggestions on that. But when we do, there'll be another subcommittee will have to be meaningful. With a different board.
Different board.
That works?
Yep, yep.
Speaking of which, quick segue, we did not reconstitute the Local Emergency Planning Commission and during our appointment process. We need to do that at our next meeting. But in the interim, um, since it is a statutory appointment of one member of the Select Board, um.
I thought that was done during, when you voted to reorganize in June.
Did we do that one?
I believe that was one of the lists, that all the people going on, the board members going on, Capcom, this board, that board, it was all part of that.
Did we do everybody? I believe I stayed and.
Oh, I was gonna ask to pick you right back on.
Yeah, I figured as much.
Stop, you're, you're looking at the.
Okay, but we also, but we need to go, okay, then we also need to go back to it just to make sure, cause now we have a new, um, emergency management director, and there might be other couple adjustments that need to be made, and I don't think we did catch the rest of that board. So can we carry that under old business?
Yeah.
For our next meeting?
We still will add those, we'll add L E P C. Because they're due to have their meeting on the twenty eighth.
Yes. We'll get that done.
And of course, that group is constituted with the primary eleven to thirteen um, categorized members, and then some of them have what I call alternates.
Correct.
So, in fact, Randy, you're the vice president of that, right, last winter? You did a great job. Congratulations. You know, Banis, Banis just wants to hand that over to you. You're not, you're not ready.
Push harder for that.
You're not ready for that.
Yeah, we did vote on that one.
No, you didn't make a motion, but.
No, did we do that in June?
Oh, I don't know. I, we can double check though.
Okay, let's just carry it, carry it, you'll carry it.
What's that now?
I'm, to railroad Jason on to committee.
I'm ninety-five percent sure. But we did so many of them.
But we still will check.
Yeah, no problem. We'll come back to it. Okay, sorry, Carl, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No.
Okay, so Select Board Goals and Objectives, any updates for tonight?
I think, uh, Jason was just gonna confirm to Lisa what items he had raised at the previous meeting, and she'll make sure it's reflected in a future, um, vision.
I can add it for our next meeting, yeah.
Yeah, just the next version. Let's just.
Review of land license for American Legion. I have not heard back from the Legion.
She had surgery, so.
I know Lisa, you would ask stuff at a previous meeting, Lisa seconded me, you know.
Okay, we should follow up to see what's going on there so we can.
Well, yeah, only cause there's money owed to them.
I was gonna say, have they made a, uh, payment on that existing contract that they all signed? Okay.
You skipped the Noble Steed. I guess there's no update on that.
I have an update on that.
Noble Steed Development Report from Planning Board Status?
They advised, they just took it under advisement. There's no, when they did the initial plans, they planned for that, there was no timeframes for any specific activities or actions that needed to be done. Um, myself and John Goddard met with Jesse today and walked the, the, uh, the development. He was actually, had put in another two hundred feet of sidewalk today, um, and actually excavated for another two hundred feet. The big things that, big ticket items that we're focused on were getting the sidewalks finished. Um, he is going to stub that road that's where the culvert slash bridge is gonna eventually go. He's going to stub that so he has the safe access for the sidewalks on and off the, the road. Um, he's gonna get the curbs in. And the big thing is that change in that for that culvert is that the, uh, the form changing that he never got signed.
Conservation restriction.
Restriction, yes.
That's because when it, it came in from him and his lawyer to town council, and town council says this isn't the right format anymore, there were changes. So now, you know, conservation is supposed to work with the town attorney's office to get the newest version that's acceptable to the state, cause at the end of the day, if that's gonna be signed up by a state official, it had, it had better be the right language and the right wording.
And I believe the, the plan is if possible, he's, will like to get the top coat on if he can get all the other stuff done, except for the, um.
Before winter?
Before winter, that's his hope.
Would be good.
I don't see it personally happening, but, you know, it's.
But the road's plowable, right, Randy? I mean, it's plowable the way it is now.
He doesn't maintain.
Yeah, they, right.
I mean, you don't, you don't have structures sticking up that have to be paved around, right?
Well, they are raised. There is a look around them.
He did say he was gonna try and shim all the catch basins, uh, fix the problems that are there, cause some of them do have edges sticking up.
It's all about making sure your roads are plowable for the winter, especially when we have high clouds.
The guy that lives on Noble Steed that is actually doing some snow removal. There's a, but one Noble Steed, I, so.
The same guy that was mowing?
That, the, the unofficial president of the H L A, yeah.
The unofficial maintenance.
What did you call it? The designated railroaded person?
Mass General law sixty-one, sixty-one A, sixty-one B, right of refusal policy. Did we send that over to, to Ben?
No, you had, at your last meeting, you put it under old business and said you'd talk about it. You wanted to have a discussion about it before you were for to council, and you haven't done that yet.
Might carry that to the next one.
We're not doing it tonight either, yeah. Let's carry it. Search R F P Development to assist with town administrator recruitment and job description review, related actions to carry out process. We all got our notes back to Nadine. Correct? Nadine will be back.
I know you had produced, you had produced a version with her.
Yeah.
And then Diane had some other suggestions, and I don't know how.
Everything that I had suggested is in here in.
In the other, the other version that was created?
Format, yeah.
Okay, so are you, cause we had dates on this, are you comfortable releasing that to everybody and their brother who might be interested in submitting a response to the R P? Cause it does, it was a very thorough, uh, template that we used. And, uh, so I'm not sure if there was any, anything else that was missing in what you wanted it to say, cause I think it's just a matter of timing and getting things out there, cause it, all the other things that you're thinking about that you want to, uh, be working on and contemplating can still be happening while this is out there going through its process and having people submit responses to it.
Interviews would be held during October. And we don't meet one week in October for Columbus Day, and we don't meet on the twenty-third. That leaves three interview periods.
On our head, you're meeting together.
Well, that leaves three, is that enough?
You, we could always put it in.
Yeah. You understand, it's, it's, it's your board schedule.
We are not scheduled for.
If you went to a meeting with somebody the first week in, in November, there's still no harm, it's still your schedule.
Correct.
The company will come, when, the vendors will come when you want them to come. You just need to figure out when you're gonna be scheduling them and how much time you wanna give them.
I just did look at the schedule.
Because some of those instructional videos that you had us watch and sit through.
Did you? Did you?
I s- I got through part of them.
I reminded him the other day.
I will admit, I got through part of them.
So some of them.
Very informative, I thought.
They are, but you know something, after you've sat through a few of them.
Sounds very similar.
Exactly, it gets to be similar, and you already know how to cut to the chase and, and maybe do a, a much more shorter process where you'll still get the answers you want.
Oh, no, I, I was, my, my education was the difference between the two groups they were interviewing.
Right.
There's a, a big, to me, a big difference between the two. And that's, that's what I got.
I like somebody that's easy to work.
That they asked.
I like someone that's easy to work with, like Mr. Steinhardt, so. But it's, uh, you know.
She's not talking about the person you're putting in the job.
Well, I get it.
It was a huge dichotomy there, yeah.
There's, there's certain.
It's an, it's, it's a similarity, I know.
Yes, there's certain, uh, personality traits that I like.
As a recruiter, we're, I don't think we're gonna be happy with.
Well, that's exactly what I was kinda hinting at. There was one that I wasn't thrilled with the way they presented that either, but.
But we don't know who's gonna.
Exactly, we don't even know if they will be presenting.
Right, if they'll be the ones that we're on.
Responding.
Um, I think, is there a competitive compensation analysis that had been done and had mentioned there was something?
Well, Kim is, Kim is working on updating a parity study now, so.
So they wouldn't have to do that, we'd have.
But, but if you're talking about them about, what, are you talking about the compensation for the firm? Are you talking about getting information from them for the position?
For the position.
Well, the, the entity that you will hire can help you firm that number.
Which isn't spelled out in the scope of work, is what I'm getting at. Do we need to, or?
Um, I don't think that's gonna be a big exercise for them to do. I think you could do that as part of a, um, an interview question. That's what you're all about, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And I went over, I didn't have anything to add. I really didn't. I, I, you did a very thorough job. Everybody didn't. I, I didn't need to add anything. You guys touched a root base.
Yeah, we even have the contract.
On page three, um, consultant will work with the boards, yada yada, sorry, yada yada.
The Mowgli.
It's working, it's working.
By training and guidance for the screening committee and select coordinators.
I've brought it up so far.
Best practices, legal requires, and instructions applicable to the process. Could we insert there? And interview questions specifically, they will, or is that understood that that's part of the guidance, do you think?
We can clearly spell it out.
I'm saying, do we wanna?
Yes, that's, yeah.
For them to guide us in the questions as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just gonna be, it's just gonna be that headed, no. And we'll go there, we'll pull that on.
I'll email that to them.
Yeah, yeah, we, we will, we'll add that on to the package.
Okay, could we also include description of proposed candidate recruitment strategies, including description of current sources and databases of candidates and their advertising venues?
Yeah, who they're gonna use, I mean, I think.
And how they're gonna add, who it's going to be advertised with.
Remember, one of the things with some of these firms is they might say to us is.
It might be proprietary, like.
Well, there's that too, but there might be one of those things where they say, well, we're gonna do this part or we'll do it, but the bills for that part of it, cause the more advertising venues and outreach venues, that's when, that's when the numbers start to go.
Right, well, I don't know how many they, they think they're gonna do.
Right, because that's why I think on some of those interviews, you're watching it, it's that they go through the beacon, they go through some of this other stuff.
And it may be fun.
I mean, let me give you an example. If you put it in the Sunday paper, probably eight hundred to a thousand dollars to do it. And we don't do that anymore.
And, yeah.
And not only that, most of the people that are looking for these types of positions aren't necessarily going to those types of venues to look for their, um, you know, the posters.
Mostly LinkedIn, Zoom.
No, the straight music, well, there are other.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, other than those little inserts, if you, if I send them to Carl, he'll put them in. If you don't like them, you can take them out, but those were the only things that I.
We're not holding this up because of those things.
Diana, no objection.
Send them to me, send them to me tonight, and we'll put them in.
Well, we'll see. We'll see. Okay. I got nothing else on that, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else we need to do on this item tonight, Carl?
Not on tonight, you just need to be going through the job description, you know, and, and again, you could just, any edits you think you need to make on it, cause I did point out in my submission to you, I put an asterisk next to L E P C Chairman, because I had done that role for fourteen years, but you do have someone else that accesses the L E P C Chairman, because that can also rotate to other professional department heads. And secondly, it's important that the, the, the position is a member of the L E P C, but they not need to be the chairperson. So that, that part is fine, and just like the position is also under the town code, a permanent member of the capital expenditures committee is not the chairperson of that committee either.
Correct.
Okay. So those will be the other types of documents and chapters and sections and local acceptances that I would also be providing to the package and will be sending out to these, um, consulting firms. Cause it's gonna be important to educate the candidates on how our affairs are structured and managed in the absence of having a special act or a shot.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, good, good. T-Mobile Hometown Grants Application Review Authorization and Pursuit. Jason, the contact boards.
Oh, I didn't realize I was supposed to contact the boards, but.
Well, you've been talking about it.
Well.
We said that the first.
No, he was.
You, you jumped.
You can't leave now.
Well, basically, uh, as I spoke, I spoke to Carl today, and I, what needs to happen is we need to identify if there are any shovel-ready programs. I went on there, designated myself as the representative. We need five letters of, uh, support for whatever project. It's quarterly, so we don't have to do it right now.
It's revolving.
It's revolving. One of the things you could use it for is the broadband, but we're not shovel-ready yet.
Spray park.
Spray park, I.
We're not ready yet.
Already, yeah, already, yeah. Even some of Randy's, uh, yeah, the pickleball. I mean, there, there's a significant lit, pretty much. I, I didn't, I don't remember if you could like use it towards maybe a, an ambulance, but.
Is that shovel ready?
We can put a shovel on it, but you know, we're, of course, we're.
It's a silver plate.
That's not a, a funding issue, it's just that we don't have that yet, cause there's no materials. But that's where we are with the T-Mobile. It's a fifty thousand grant, and it's just, you know, a matter of us designating a couple of projects that I can give to them and they can peruse, and they even give you samples of grants that have been provided and won in the past and how, how to write them, and so it's, uh, you know, it's, it's been very informative. But, uh, you know, it's definitely worth it. It's just a matter of finding a project to pick and try and get some funding for.
If you've got that other stuff that, that showed those examples and all that, if you give me all that package of materials, we'll send it out to different departments and boards.
Might be able to send that to you right now.
That's fine. We'll send it out to other departments and boards and, and get them thinking about what they might have coming along. That would lend itself to an application. But, as you said, they're gonna be near a, a level of serious.
It's gotta be, yeah. It's gotta be, yeah. Yeah, it's basically gotta be ready, the the plan is written, this is what we're gonna do. And it's just a matter of putting shovel around on.
Have one quarter to do it, to submit it for.
Yeah, they, for this quarter, they have to be in by November first, so obviously.
I heard a door handle.
And it's, they're doing it for like three or four years, so.
Thank you. Protocols update. I did see some back and forth on this today, some highlighted ones. I'd like to cover this, carry this to the next meeting for discussion. Yeah, I I thought some of this was excellent work.
To get it going.
Some of them I'd like to have some further dialogue on. I also like to call attention to something I noticed this past weekend. And now I gotta find it. In the select board protocol, the select board. There, it says that the third Tuesday in May by tradition per protocol, but it's actually mandated by. Town Code, Chapter Twenty, Section One, that town meeting shall be held on the third.
It does say that.
Yeah, shall be held on the third Tuesday of May, starting at seven o'clock. Now, we had talked about having a warrant article.
What page is that?
I don't know, I copied it from my notes. I hear you, it's under the town meeting part.
All right, we'll send that to Carl, right?
I, well, it's on the last page.
Well, of course.
Okay, of course it is. And it says the town meeting is the selectman's warrant by statute, blah blah blah, but it says it's in. It is the practice of the town of Southwick, uh, blah blah blah, anyway. Uh, it's not true. It's it's actually in the town code under Chapter Twenty, Section One, at a child day. And we had talked about having a future article, in fact, we might have had an article already to amend the start time for a town meeting.
We did that.
But we didn't change the date. The reason I.
No, we didn't change, we never changed the date.
I understand that, so we changed it the start time to no, no earlier than, yeah, something like that. We didn't make it. Cause we wanted to start earlier, but we couldn't by statute, so we amended the statute. I just wanted to put it on record that I actually have scheduled business travel as of now, that I will not be in town for a town meeting next year.
Look, it's not set by statute, you're right, it's set by town code.
It's set by town code and it's not by tradition, it it's mandated, so our protocol is incorrect. I assure you it was in there, because I read it three times. Oh, it has been the practice of the town of Southwick to hold its annual meeting on the third Tuesday. Well, it's a practice, because it's the law.
Okay, well, it's been the law, that's all.
So, we should declare, so I was looking at it going, all right. Um, and then the following Tuesday is uh, Memorial Day anyways, early this year. So, is what it is.
Okay.
So, um.
Alright, so we'll just carry this forward back to the next meeting. That's good. Everybody's picking up their little.
It just has to do with the work of the calendar, if you look at where May starts, uh, and then the Tuesdays, how they, they line up, it ends up being fairly late. Agcom Associate Vacancy and Kongkong Vacancy.
I personally reached out to all of them, sent them all an email, told them of the date for the next appointment. And the opportunity existing again, um, and hopefully they will, and I asked them to go to the portal and do their. With application again, just to express continued interest.
Do we have someone interested in the planning board associate? The one who was doing it is now a full elected member with a five-year term.
Correct, and I reached out to Chairman Doherty and he didn't have anybody yet either, so we need to kind of talk to people or. Use social media. Mike and um, Attorney Mike and um, we need to get somebody in that role. Um, and it would probably be in everyone's best interest to do that expeditiously.
I have, I do have somebody that might be in mind that would be possibly interested.
Good, have them apply. And then I was also contacted by a, one of the folks that I met on Hope and Farm Day. So I will, I promised him that I would call him back and.
Any good scroll?
No.
Planning Board Associate, one of the selections in the list.
Yes.
Yeah, it's it's, it's a joint appointment annually.
And.
Yep.
The other five, a full five elected.
But let's carry, if it's okay with yous.
Yeah, we've got those.
To carry this for the nine twenty-eight meeting. Nine twenty-five meeting, yes.
We're getting out.
We might be out by nine twenty-eight.
One other candidate who, um, on the day we did those last appointments. We did an application for economic, we have one more for economic development. No, I'm not gonna ask to increase the number of numbers. Um, and Mr. Bill Terry was looking for economic development and perhaps he'd be interested in.
It would be an excellent idea. I know Bill very well.
Do you wanna talk to him about?
I shall text him on my, when I get home tonight.
He had applied for economic development.
Oh, really?
After we closed that, I called him to tell him that.
So what's he interested in?
Economic development, but I'm thinking it's.
I will, I will phone him and.
I just wanna know where you were going.
But I wanna get the Agcom Associate and the Kongkong Vacancy taken care of at our next meeting. And hopefully we'll have some applicants to discuss and then send, we can schedule a joint meeting with the planning board.
While on the other ones, the Ag and if you have them, Lisa's gonna have to give them appointment slots.
My point, that's why I'm doing that now, so that we have time to do that. At my mind. Good. And that's it, that's here. Carl, old business.
I'm good.
I have the proposal for the Green Energy Administration. Uh, we had not ten thousand dollars to spend for the grants, this came in at ninety-six sixty.
I'm shocked, shocked.
Right, so close.
Who sent you the email, they're told.
Right, so do we just have to accept this? Do we need to, we already had voted to use them? Do I, am I just declaring this is what it is and we're good?
Would you recommend that we we execute said agreement?
We did last time, but we just needed to get the proposal finalized.
Cause then we don't need to do anything.
Well, you, you agreed. You agreed to get the proposal and you agreed that it would be good for the committee to have the support. The support now, it's just a matter of you going to the next step and saying, we accept the proposal, please reduce it to a a written contract. Cause that's just, that's a quote, it's not an actual written thing where the party signed it. So the board would have to authorize the acceptance of the quote from the PVPC. For support services to the um, the Green Communities Committee in itself. And to authorize itself to sign. Oh, you can't, I I've had people complain about my writing for forty-five years.
It looks like a prescription.
But I can usually read it, that's the sip.
So do you need a motion to to authorize Diane to execute that agreement on on the select board's app? She's carried it to the ten-yard line.
Yeah, well. And I will make the motion. Right. Diana asked me to call them up. Oh, he always said I, uh, Jason Peron, I.
Now you're telling the call. Other old business, Diane.
I think that was my.
Oh, I went over the stuff I'd been working on.
Okay.
Between writing prescription.
I couldn't help but notice, I apologize. Uh, we covered it briefly, but thank you Representative Baldiga and Senator Marks for presenting the Southwick Fire Department. Uh, and Carl with a check for twenty-five thousand dollars earmarked for uh, for firefighting gear. Um, and as the chief said, that gear is increased by uh, over twenty-five percent, over a thousand dollars a unit. Um, and takes forever to get. Uh, impact update. Upcoming review with the planning board to present the draft master plan is scheduled for October fifth. Um, and it's anticipated at the end of October. Um, the master plan advisory committee will have completed its work and make a motion to dissolve itself. Or have its appointing authority dissolve it. Um, of note, I know Diane was there, um, there was a passing discussion at the end of the meeting that I just couldn't let go. Um, the chairman made a suggestion as to the appointment of a master plan implementation committee that consisted of seven members. Kongkong, Agcom, DPW, Finance Committee, EDC, Planning Board, and the CAO. Um, I objected to not having a member of the select board represent. Um, represented on the uh, implementation committee, given investor plan implementation committee is overarching and not just a planning and zoning committee. And then I I proposed in turn that perhaps it should consist of the CAO, the town planner. The conservation coordinator, et cetera, and and if that's the way they wanted to approach it. Um, I assume that this will come back for further discussion and there was a very productive discussion afterwards. That I'm, I'm not quite sure, well, I quite understand what where Mr. Phelps is coming from, but I I firmly believe that. Um, the select board should be represented on the master plan implementation committee and have a have a uh, member representative on that, on that committee. Um, I also.
I agree with you, because it's more important to have a CEO can be part of the process, it should be a select board member.
Correct.
Because then if they're gonna take any action on and advancing it and they're moving it, and it falls under what the CAO will be doing. Well, then the select person can just come in and say to the CAO, this is what we decided last night, can we do actions A, B, C, D, and E?
Correct. Correct, and it, um. I also suggest, they were, and then they were trying to keep it small and I said that this committee is not gonna be. Super small, it's also not gonna be as big as the impact, it just, it's tough to maintain that quorum, but I did suggest, um, and and um. I suggested that Council on Aging have a seat at the table, um, given the representative population. Um, of the community and uh, Dave McWilliams made an excellent suggestion that one or two members of the public should have a seat. Um, as well, which I think is perfectly appropriate and worthwhile, that the, um. The public members on the impact have had a significant impact, if I may, on the on the process and and. Brought a very interesting perspective in a lot of cases, so, uh, not out of character for the chair of the impact, the way that went, but we'll see where that comes back. Um, notification from the Office of Appeals and Dispute Resolution regarding the town's withdrawal of an appeal of the Chapter Ninety-One License. At one forty-one Congamon Road that we had discussed three months ago. We finally got the official, the government moves at the speed that. We got the letter from them that the appeal's been disposed of and now they go forward with the actual issuance of the license. Um. I think that.
Did not have prevented the place from opening up.
No, it didn't.
Right, so why wasn't it open?
That's a whole nother. So, the town was not party to the fact that that place didn't open. Um, it's that I'm aware, I'm sure you'll get the opposite discussion somewhere. Um, and then Diane, thank you for covering the Attorney General Review of the Articles. Um, as an aside, Article Sixteenth, we discussed at length, Article Thirteenth. Um, needs to go back to the planning board and probably a town meeting to be adjusted. There was some.
Short-term rental.
Yeah, it's the short-term rental bylaw, it had to do with the um, appeals period and just the the tolling of that. And how it might conflict with.
We feared that, we, I made sure that was shared with the planner and the building inspector, since he has a role in it. And also since that he was thinking about, he was gonna need to have a special additional software, um. You know, program so that he could use it to track some of these types of things.
Yep.
So, and that, you know, it's gonna take time for this other issue to happen and it's gonna take time for him to get the funds for that, because. Some of those modules are pre-priced and that's not in the current budget.
Is it shovel-ready?
I can carry it in on a shovel. Mister Chairman, I have one other thing that I forgot to mention was September nineteenth at eleven AM, we have the Director of Rural Affairs and Gobi will be here.
Did we confirm?
It is confirmed.
At what time?
Eleven, uh, eleven AM, Senator Marks needed to adjust the time, uh, but then Representative Baldiga is supposed to be in attendance.
Nine nineteen at eleven AM.
Correct.
Rural fears. Okay, and where are they coming?
Here.
Okay.
But that was pretty easy spot to do it.
Okay. Are we having treats?
Do you want them? No, that's fine. No, each of the three of you can come up with a culinary thing, you know, but if you want, if it's at eleven o'clock. It's kind of a.
If it's at eleven.
Kind of a crunchy type, you know, Lisa could get some finger sandwiches through Big Y. And we could just. You know, that kind of stuff. Can I request pizza?
Cause you know, I had nothing to do the Monday before.
They got her out here.
Anything else, it's ten and nine, folks.
What are you burning down?
I don't know that I can actually attend said meeting.
Yes, that's, I guess unfortunately the only one that.
Oh, that's right, I saw that, yeah.
I may send food or something instead, I don't.
Okay.
And I have nothing else. That was the last thing I had to hang up.
Mercifully, I'll entertain you to adjourn.
I will second the motion to adjourn.
Motion, and I will second it.
All in favor.
I'm sorry, I said unfortunately, my mind is.
Diane, go I.
Why did I already say that?
Thank you all.